All right, let's call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting. January 10th, we're calling a meeting to order at 7:05. Please join me in the Budget of Legion.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Glintoff, present.
Brizo.
Present.
Kerry, Matheson, Noel.
Here.
Reiser.
Present.
We have four of them.
Excellent. First item is adoption of the agenda. And there are proposed changes. This would be the time to propose them. Yeah.
I would like to pull G8 possible action here in front of this wine tasting room from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Turn your mic off.
I just did that. Any, any other suggestions?
Sometimes you have to mute on Zoom as well.
I'm doing that too.
Okay.
I do have just a procedural question before, or we accept this agenda. For the unfinished business possible action compensation commission appointment. I would suggest it should be appointments and the two additional applications should be included. You've only got one.
I've only put the one that I have nominated. That is correct.
We got two additional applications and we're wondering if you would be nominating one of those.
Not tonight.
Well, then, if I could suggest maybe a motion to amend J1 from compensation commission appointment to compensation commission appointment. Laura?
Well, it only makes sense if I nominate those people and I'm not nominating them.
We'll, we'll talk to you about it and ask you to.
Do we need to take this up now as an agenda item or can we take it up substantively when we, when we debate with the motion, when it's considered at the right time in the meeting?
Our rules aren't that specific, but our practice has been that it would be now that if Will is understanding the appointment singular to be only the single nomination, then I think it's better for us to have clarity on what we're planning to talk about instead of arguing about the scope of it.
I, I think the argument is not about what we say plural or singular. The argument is about whether I, as the supervisor, am nominating people for the compensation commission.
It would make more sense to include all of the applicants and make all, do all of the discussions at one time.
Why don't we have some discussions outside of this meeting about, about other nominations and then bring them in a subsequent.
Can we just pull it, Tara?
Yeah, because we did say, Will, that we would bring back the compensation commission nominations, you know?
No, we did not. We decided that we would bring back this particular nomination to this particular meeting by a motion.
I understand. Can we pull it? I don't think this is ripe for tonight.
I don't either. I would support that. Me too.
Because then we can work over a couple of weeks on consensus candidates that we can all live with, maybe.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're pulling from the agenda, item J1. I mean, that's, that's the proposal in case. And any other changes to the agenda? Is someone prepared to move the agenda as amended?
No changes. I just want to note though, Will, I have a speaker on J5.
Speaker?
Just a brief five-minute presenter from, from Diane Benson, who wrote the administrator job description, deputy treasurer, all of that for 2021. So I'm just flagging that. It's fine to keep it as J5, but she's gonna, would provide some information that if the board wanted to hear it earlier, I think.
But we, we have public comment during which a speaker could make a public comment addressing an item on the agenda.
No, I mean, I'll, I'll just ask her to speak at, at J5. I was just.
Well, you can ask the board if the board would invite somebody to speak when that agenda item comes up. And the board can decide if the board wants to make an exception and have someone speak.
Well, it wouldn't be an exception. I think we often have presenters, again, three to four minutes. She's our former HR professional. I have a, I mean, I think we, we have developers speak on their projects. We have staff speak on their items. This is, this is literally three to four minutes. This is not a big deal. I wouldn't have raised it if I didn't think that her contributions were so valuable that y'all might want to hear it before J2.
Board, the board will decide when we get to that agenda item whether to invite someone to speak.
Please have some respect for Diane Benson, who is here tonight to do a three to four minute presentation on J5. It's, this is not unusual.
Jessica, if, if you want to treat this with respect, then you would have come to me and spoken to me about this in advance of the meeting, not sprung it on me at the last minute.
There's nothing sprung on me.
No? All right. We'll, we'll, we'll deal with that when we get to that agenda item. Is someone ready to move the agenda? Moved by Brizo, support by Palmer. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? You can proceed with the meeting. That brings us to communications to the Board of Trustees. Materials are in the packet.
Wanted to note, I saw the note from Evan Pratt, and I, I would like to invite him to a meeting soon. It seems like, you know, I see Cervano and others here, week after week. It seems like that whole geographic area, there's a larger water issue that I'd like to get educated on.
So just to let you know and inform everybody, Evan Pratt has been invited to the next board meeting. However.
Oh, good.
Well, we are in the process of trying to get the community meeting set up and Will has been, Will has talked to Doug Luon. I've talked to Doug Luon. The meeting has not been set up yet, but it would be a meeting of all the, all the concerned residents in the Parkwood area. That has not been set up yet. Will was saying he'd like to coordinate that with his presentation by Evan Pratt. That's reasonable. I agree. So we've got some things we're waiting to resolve here.
So is that like a public hearing meeting or is that like a town hall meeting that they're?
It's more like a town hall.
At their, at their location.
At their location facilitated by their developer probably and the board for the Parkwood Homeowners Association.
Thank you. We're, we're trying to help facilitate that and we just want to coordinate that with any presentation by Evan Pratt. So it, it, it may happen in time for Evan to come to the next meeting where it may be that Evan will come to a meeting in February.
Thank you.
So, and if there's other comment on the communications to the Board of Trustees, that will bring us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Is someone ready to, is someone on the board ready to act as the timekeeper for that?
I'm already doing Zoom.
Pass it on.
Well, you can try. So yeah, the key thing is to, if it seems appropriate to give someone a heads up if they're approaching their three-minute limit before they get there. Someone, well, first we take speakers from, who are present in the meeting hall and then we turn to those who are participating remotely. If you are here and you would like to speak during public comment, please don't hesitate. Come on up and have a turn.
I don't see any paper assigned here, but my name is David Spicer. I live in 525 Baker Road. And my, my question is, is I'd like to know if any of you guys got my email that I sent today?
Yes.
Okay. And my second question is, and it will be directed to Mr. Hathaway. And that is that my trash has still not been picked up again. Still sitting there and sitting there all week after numerous calls to, to GFL, and they still tell me the same thing and they keep lying over and over again. We'll be there tomorrow to pick it up. So I just want to let you know. And this is, as you all know, this isn't the first time this happened to me. I don't know if they don't want to come down by service drive or not. So I'd just like to just mention something on record. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry to hear that.
Before I start, I just want to say it is totally inappropriate to interrupt a speaker to say that they have limited time. That is a disruption and it's not fair to the speaker. I thought we had agreement on that when we discussed with the prior administrator. Good evening. Kathleen Brand, CIO resident. I am the spokesman person for CIO physically concerned residents. Our mission is to hold the township accountable for use of public resources and to seek state intervention. The township board continues to ignore requests for information about how residents' tax dollars are being spent. These requests include all reports, state revenue sharing payments being withheld due to poor audit procedures, implementation or lack of implementation of internal controls, risking misappropriation of public funds, lack of implementation of prior year collective corrective action plans. We believe it is a mistake for this board to ignore our group's request for information. I have a couple of points here. Number one, our group strongly recommends the township reinstate Mary Gillis as the newsletter editor. From a financial point of view, it is vastly cheaper to have Mary do this work than, for example, paying Mr. Murdy $70 an hour for a task that he is not at all qualified to complete or someone else in the future. And clearly, Mary is the expert in this field. I have a couple of items about the audit, but I want to jump to another item. This is regarding agenda item J5 Committee Report. This is a well-written document supporting title of Township Manager Reduction in Supervisor Job Description and Recommendations for Finance Director. It was clearly written by an attorney. It fails, though, in one aspect in its analysis. Specifically, the last paragraph on page five recommending the finance director report to the Township Manager based on budget and controlling expenditures. By definition, a budget is an estimate of expenditure. It is important to understand that a budget is not equivalent to approval of specific payments or expenditures. This document was written and approved by two lawyers and an IT professional. With no disrespect, these individuals are not trained in accounting or finance. The fallacies in the recommendation for Finance Director for reporting structure is as follows. This document clearly notes on page four and five, the statutory duties of the clerk. All of these duties are transactional with recording in the BNSNA system. This clerk is specifically bonded to attest to the accuracy of the transaction. A budget as simply an estimate is not a record of finances of the township. A township manager is not bonded to attest to the accuracy of the letters and journals. The expenditures of the township are not controlled by the manager, as stated. Department heads control their own expenditure. The manager simply manages contracts. And also, I have provided factual evidence to this board that 90% of comparable general law townships have longstanding policies that the Finance Director reports to the clerk. It is inconceivable that this subcommittee has come to a different conclusion based on who creates the budget, which is simply an estimate. That's where the fallacy lies. These two other points, I will shorten them. They have to do with repeated viola, repeated findings, material weaknesses. I'll just share that with, in a written copy to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to give you a heads up. I may go 10 to 15 seconds over. I'm an equal opportunity critic and I want to include everyone now. Kat Stein, longtime resident of CIO Township. I want you to know that I too support Mary Gillis to be reinstated as the editor of the CIO Township Newsletter. Mary has the knowledge and experience required for the task. She has already shown that she has integrity and would not publish a newsletter that contains untruthful information. Excuse me. Whereas our supervisor has proven himself to be a master of spin when providing M Life in the Dexter Sun Times with quotes that can only be described as his version of the truth. The residents of CIO Township would be better served to have a newsletter with information they can trust to be the whole truth. Mary Gillis would provide nothing less than that. Please avoid fake news and reinstate Mary Gillis as the editor of the CIO Newsletter. Thank you. It's a new year, a new beginning, an opportune time to replace bad habits with better habits. I'm referring to the way these board meetings have been conducted over the last couple of months. Sometimes this board's behavior leaves a lot to be desired. I'm referring to the way board members break in to interject while another member is speaking. The males on our board frequently talk over and interrupt the female members and sometimes trustee Brasso and trustee Reiser, you even talk over each other. It appears the only female on this board that the males don't interrupt is Treasurer Palmer. And it's not like she's been providing us with any words of wisdom. Nope. The majority of her comments are actually verbal attacks against clerk Glintoff. Why do you and supervisor Hathaway allow these insults to go on? Trustee Noel and now supervisor, excuse me, trustee Noel and now trustee Kerry, you have a voice on this board. Why are you not calling out the treasurer on her biweekly rants against our clerk? To paraphrase Madeline Albrecht, women should help other women. There is a section in the Rules of Order that were adopted back in March 8th to clearly state, when speaking, no board member will be interrupted without the member's consent. Gentlemen, we ask that you refrain from constantly interrupting other board members. Please let them speak and please pay attention what they have to say. Where Glintoff, you have a wealth of CIO information. You are only too eager to share. But please consider biting your tongue or count to three before you consider jumping in to answer a question that's been asked of a board member other than yourself. Trustee Brasso, at the first working session, you made a claim that you are not Team Glintoff or Team Hathaway. You are Team CIO. Are you at all concerned that following up that claim, you had cries of, Will, I got your back. Will, I'm on your side. Might have invalidated your early, earlier claim of being Team CIO? You know who is Team CIO? The residents who attend CIO meetings either in person or on Zoom. Those who participate in the public comments portion of these meetings, those who volunteer for committees, the 100-plus members of CIO's physically concerned residents, those who make an effort to stay informed of all things CIO. Those are the people we can rightly claim to be Team CIO. We all in this board to succeed. So please, let's do better, members. Please. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So first up, I echo everybody's wise words of wisdom with Mary Gillis returning to her position as newsletter editor. Encourage the board to vote on that tonight and please approve it. Secondly, G2, which is on the consent agenda involving our chart of accounts conversion. As the clerk has identified, we are still in line behind several dozen other municipalities in order to get this work done with BSNA. I encourage you when you vote on the consent agenda to please approve the consent agenda full, including that item here just a few minutes. Point number three, thank you for filing the audit with the state. I do know it's still three months late, but I'm glad that's filed. I do note that there are several areas of deficiency that were noted on many prior audits as well as several areas that were identified that were not identified on previous audits. I would encourage the Board of Trustees and all of the officers to continue to review these items and actually implement our plan of action. One area specifically has been noted year after year after year after year and just hasn't ever been really addressed. It's our unfunded retiree insurance premiums. For the F65 is $1,164,180. It's not a small dollar amount. And it's not going to be solved overnight, but I've encouraged you all to add that to a future agenda to at least begin to develop a plan to see what we can do in order to tackle that. Interminister Topps, I know your title's up for change, so we'll go with that for now. Mr. Murdy had started the budget process before he began his transition out. The budget process here last year was quite chaotic, I guess is a good word for it. So if you could continue that process and keep moving us forward in the right direction, allow us to have more runway before we need to have the budget done instead of having to scramble and have a special meeting in order to revise or amend something that may have come out. Ultimately, that process should start soon. Finally, one thing I did see in the Sun Times today that was kind of surprising, because I didn't see a red sales website under our public notices or anywhere else was CIO are sometimes referred to destroying, sorry, removal of the wetland over at the Parkwood property next to Parkwood condos where developments being proposed. I'm sure we responded to Eagle and given them our thoughts about removing a wetland. I realize it's not a large wetland as far as things come, but Parkland still needs answers. There's still a lot to be determined there. I do know that the Water Resources Commission is very involved and I, I've had the pleasure of working with them quite a bit as I developed the building. So hopefully you're able to work with Mr. Pratt and get some answers for that. Thank you.
Anyone else in the meeting hall who would like to speak during public comment?
I'm Paula Globerson, longtime CIO resident. I just want to say, I hope we don't see any more articles in the Dexter Sun Time where people are blaming. To me, that article showed, let's get the lawsuit done and find out what's what on that. Because blaming, blaming another board member, I, I don't think is appropriate until things are settled. And then secondly, I wonder sometimes about these committees we have. And actually, I loved a lot of your comments from the Planning Commission because I may not sign in all the time, but I will go back and watch them on YouTube when I have time. I think a lot of people are doing that too. So we have to thank Pam Boyd for that. But the PUD thing, I think is really important, but what you were talking about when, it's kind of like the cart before the horse. Some of this, like, he was a nice gentleman. He wanted to sell part, part of his land off. And there's a huge wetland over there. And I'm thinking, before people start changing the zoning, maybe we should have some type of site plan, an idea set forth. Especially, well, I think in all the areas, but especially sensitive areas. And what I really liked, what you said, John, was that you said, what do the other neighbors think? And that was, to me, very important. Not just the person that might share the driveway. So this area has changed so much in the, in the last 30 years. And we're by, we're, we're, we have a millage and it passed again. And so obviously, it's important to people. But I also look at, why don't we have a millage for the roads? And this is coming up and it needs to be on your agenda at some time because the SAD's going to be running out. Then they talk about your budget hasn't been done and the audit's all messed up. So how are you going to be planning budgets and all these other things? So as far as I'm concerned, I'm so happy, sir, that you've joined the team here and I'm sure there's a lot catching up to do. And when somebody gets into contact, let me tell you, that YouTube resource for all these committees is excellent. And because we don't always have time to be watching it. But I don't like the way the committees are done either. There are people who have applied for committee and then they're, they don't even hear word. And I've seen a lot of this in CIO. It's been going on for a long time, whether it's supervisor interrupting a meeting and going out there and calling a developer in the middle of a CIO board meeting and holding somebody to 30 seconds of extra speak. But we need to look at and have, Kathy talks about this all the time. Kathy, no. Process, 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 process. Because there are going to be, people are going to get sick of coming here complaining. There are lawsuits, as far as I'm concerned, clerk Glintoff had to bring that. And there's going to be other lawsuits from some of what these committees are doing. Thank you so much.
Who else present in the hall who is desiring to speak during public comment?
Good evening. My name is Alan DeBono. I'm a condo from Parkwood condominiums. And I'm here this evening to speak about the proposed Arbor Skrull underground detention system. I sent trustees a document earlier in the day, so you should all have that. I'm going to go with the summary first, actually. Elevation-wise, AG would be no less than seven feet above the Parkwood community. This is using elevation data culled from the Om Lord drawings themselves. This developer's well-staffed engineering company, coordinating with the CIO Township Engineering Firm, have conceived an elaborate underground detention system that will be relied upon to keep Parkwood safe from future catastrophic stormwater. That entails a great many calculations and engineering details over 21 drawings. Parkwood has put three low-density engineers who have made a valiant attempt to understand that trove of information. Having done our best, we offer the following. Number one, an underground extreme solution, describing this. This is a system often used for industrial applications where a high-density surface build is desired. It is a substitute for a conventional detention pond. A quote, I'll give you a quote from Carlisle Wartman Review, which was April 29th. This entire site is to be cleared and mass-graded, unquote. That clear cut, along with asphalt and roofing, means the parcel would no longer absorb water in a natural fashion, relying instead upon a below-ground reservoir. While some of our stormwater would be absorbed by the bioswales, they serve as a conduit for flow into the reservoir. A FOIA is in process from us to determine if CIO currently has any runoff solutions of this nature. Number two, take away mega filter and mega elevation. The proposed system is below the AG Main Street. The system utilizes gravity, which means it must physically be high enough for all reservoirs stored water to flow downhill ultimately into the U of M Lake. Rising above the Parkwood community as on a pedestal, AG would be an average of seven feet, seven feet above the manhole covers, cover levels on Parkwood and Wood Grove. Timing-wise, such an extreme elevation would only be realized by their Parkwood neighbors as the grading bulldozers were doing their work. At this moment, I'm going to jump to the end where there's, there's an update on Parkwood's town hall meeting. This is Parkwood itself. I want you to recall, Parkwood's two factions. One, we have low-density seeking residents, residents, which I'm a part of. And then we have a governing board that supports this underground system and 35 units. Recall my shared Parkwood November 29th annual meeting where low-density residents. Recall my shared Parkwood November 29 annual meeting where low-density residents asked for and received the governing board's promise to hold a town hall meeting within 30 days. A meeting has not been scheduled. Low-density residents are currently circulating a petition that per our bylaws would mandate this Q and A meeting. At this point, this is kind of the end of my talk, but I was wondering if you're up for a tape measure demonstration. Seven feet I mentioned, if I were standing on a average manhole cover in Parkwood, there's six of them, if you average those. And then you average the AG surface where they're going to build, that would be exactly where my thumb is, which is seven feet tall above our manhole covers. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak?
Diane, why don't you have Diane to speak up? She's a little more than three minutes. That's fine.
She's here. If you guys want to go.
She knows she's she was she's prepared a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Bill Doty from 465 Wood Grove Drive. I'm in the Parkwood condos. And I've talked before about taking the development plan for our Grove back to the planning commission. Here's some reasons or things that I think that the planning commission should take care of before it comes back to you. Otherwise, you're going to be saddled with these issues. Stormwater runoff, the developer's property has been changed from a bioswale-dependent water retention system to the underground detention system that Mr. Birbano just talked about. The question is, is it appropriate to change all the stormwater runoff and now go to the U of M Lake behind Parkwood condos instead of being mostly self-contained on their property? Second, the planning commission should consider a possible lawsuit from a similar-sized property with nine condos. That's the Trillium Crossing. They were required by the township to have a full retention pond to self-contain all of their stormwater runoff. Our Grove Development has the luxury of doing an underground detention system with a higher density of 35 condos for the same acreage. Master Plan encourages, number three, the master plan encourages the retention of open space, natural area, coordination of new open space for recreation and conservation. What alternatives has the developer offered to satisfy the above features of the master plan? The planning commission should demand some concession in these areas since there's limited space in their site plan due to the high density of the proposed units. Number four, the pressurized sanitary sewer system has been changed. I was originally going to be on the Arb Grove side of the road in their property. And now the sewer connection has been changed 300 feet north into the Parkwood right-of-way for 300 or 3,000 square foot disturbance area. Is this the most appropriate connection? And then since the last one I have is since the preliminary site plan approved by a planning commission, many more details have evolved. The elevation of the property will be seven feet higher, as we just explained, and in order to accommodate that structural underground detention basin. Is it appropriate to do this as it affects the neighbors on all sides of their property? As Alan just demonstrated with that seven-foot change. Thank you so much.
Anyone else present in the hall who would like to speak during public comments? If not, then we'll turn to those who are participating remotely.
Sure. First up is Kevin Jackson, followed by Jonathan Greenberg. Kevin?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Kevin Jackson. I'm a resident of the Parkwood condo association. As my neighbors have so eloquently stated, there are a lot of changes going on with that property. If things were so great when they first developed it, and if we had not stepped in as concerned residents, think about all the water that would be traveling through that new community if we weren't as adamant as we are about low density. The property as or the the project as proposed is outrageous. It doesn't fit. It's an eyesore. Why are you trying to to shove 35 units in three and 3.89 buildable acres with wetlands, with bat sanctuaries? SIO Township is bigger than this densely proposed project. If they don't come through meeting all the legal requirements, you must deny this project as proposed. A more reasonable density, we are not against, to keep the character of the corridor intact. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Marine Richards. Jonathan?
Hey, hello. Happy New Year, friends and neighbors. Appreciate the time. I'll be quick. I just wanted to point out that Rob Pattinson has been I know good intentions all around, but Rob Pattinson has been putting the time into making sure the video is available on YouTube. So credit where credit due. Also want to jump up on the Mary Gillis support bandwagon this evening and cast my support based on reading her work as a resident over the last years, years and years, and always finding the articles to be pretty well-balanced and respectful and didn't didn't have a tone. That was the thing I liked about him the most. They felt very informative. I also wanted to thank a few of the trustees and members of the BOT for the response they received about my comments regarding calling or labeling the public and audience. I know I've joked about that you guys aren't entertaining and you're certainly not the Pope. But I think it's important, words are important. And when referring to the public, we are not an audience. We are here for public comments. So thank you for the response and that and was glad to hear that stuff is happening. There's one other thing I wanted to thank you for, but it slipped my mind. At the very end here, though, I would like to say that my observations over the last couple of special meetings are not great. They started off good with a lot of talk about teamwork and supporting each other. And it quickly felt like it disappeared. And it'd be one thing if people were being obstinate, but I think people were just trying to talk and they weren't being allowed to finish and subjects were changed. And so going back and trying to finish may it it becomes a rough and tumble that some people may succeed at better than others. And equivocating things like, I didn't say it was a power grab. I said it looked like a power grab. I mean, come on, that's that's not the teamwork that I heard being talked about in the first meeting. So can you guys all take a look at yourselves for a second and understand that y'all have to give a little bit here and y'all have to be a little softer and maybe listen to each other a little bit more? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is Marine Richards, followed by Diane Benson. Marine? Marine Richards? Oh, Marine, I just muted you. I'm so sorry. One moment. Apologies, Marine. Are you there now? That was my fault. Go ahead.
Yep. Okay. Hi, Marine Richards from Roseland Drive. I want to I want to give my full support to bring back Mary Gillis as editor of the newsletter. She is the best person for that position and would do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you, Marine. Next up is Diane Benson. Diane?
Hi, good evening, everybody, and happy new year. I, too, want to, I am in support of the resolution proposed by trustee Carrie to return the editorship of the SIO Township Newsletter to Mary Gillis. Mary has over 15 years' experience as an accomplished editor and writer. She was a freelance editor with several university presses for clients and contributed articles to reference books and book reviews to the Detroit Free Press. Mary previously served as the editor of our newsletter from the fall of 2019 through the summer of 2020. From the time Mary became editor, I found the newsletter to be very informative, blending news in the township as well as columns by elected officials. I also agree with the proposal to have the entire board review the draft newsletter before its publication. And once the draft is reviewed and agreed upon by the entire board of trustees, it should not be changed by anyone before publication. And another thing that I wanted to mention to everybody, I know the the board does know this, but perhaps other people listening or in the audience do not know. But I did apply to be a member of the Compensation Commission. I feel as an HR professional, I have a lot to contribute to the commission. And if I am not appointed, I certainly hope to be told why not. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, SIO Township President. My comments tonight are about the previous session. One thing that makes the incubator model that Mark Smith and Linda Smith are are bringing to SIO Township is that it is a business that fosters businesses. It doesn't just come in, do its business, pay its taxes, and that's it. It fosters new businesses that can then leave the incubator, come out into SIO Township and occupy other space. Mark Brzezow was not impressed with the risk they were taking. And I would submit that the risk the incubator takes is that if they invest in equipment for a and and providing space, building special rooms, as Mark Smith identified, that if that startup fails, then the incubator is out, all of that investment. And that makes it slightly different than a normal business. There are a lot of businesses out there. There are not a lot of incubator businesses because that involves such high risk. And because Mark Smith and Linda Smith are are so talented and have such skill at identifying what startup, what life science startups have the potential for succeeding, that's why they've been so successful all these years. That's what they bring to SIO Township. One other thing to identify is that the 300 North Z building was actively damaged by the previous owners. They never provided security for that empty building. Therefore, the copper thieves came in. And not only did the copper thieves came in, the previous owners never even did minimal maintenance. So there's water damage from the roof. Then the copper thieves came in and they came in through the roof. For the past six or eight years, they never repaired the hole in the roof. So water has been pouring into that building for six or eight years. That is the responsibility of the previous owner that Mark Smith and Linda Smith fortunately are willing to repair. And that should be considered in this application as well. I'd also like to throw my support to Mary Gillis. She has proven herself an effective newsletter editor for several years and should be returned to that job. I'd also like to thank Bob Walsh for the minutes of the Road Advisory Committee meeting that are in the packet tonight. His minutes should be an example of how other committees should run their minutes as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Rob. I see no other hands.
In that case, we can move on to the next agenda item. That is approval of the minutes. First set of two minutes we have before us this evening is from the meeting of December 13. We'll proceed through page by page. Sure.
Kathy's got some handles, so we're in good hands. No, no, you just need to look to see if anybody's like waving their hand saying like the sound in a way or anything like that.
Are you ready?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so on page one, this is the minutes of December 13. Are there any corrections? On page two, I guess I have a question. The motion that trustee Noel made to shift the item that had been J6 to the top of new business, the way that that's been interpreted in the minutes is to renumber, which causes confusion. I think usually what we do when we move.
Can you show me where you're looking?
Yeah, sure. First bold section. Yeah, so on page two of the minutes here, it was to move it to the top of new business. But what I think happened is everything got renumbered, which confuses.
Yeah, so I and my practice is not to renumber.
That's what I thought I remembered. So so that has implications if that's changed back in terms of the because everything got renumbered, which makes it a little confusing.
Okay, I'll make sure that's corrected throughout.
Okay. So I page three. Corrections. Page four. Page five. Here, there's something that sort of the page five and page six, there's some a record here that's sort of repeated. I guess what I would suggest is keep the first in response to question from Flintoff. And then page six, delete the top two items, which are sort of a repeat of the same record.
And then. Oh, but the one thing that's not a repeat is when I encouraged you to use existing staff resources instead of authorizing.
What I would suggest is remove the first one and keep the second one if that's an important element.
Okay.
Just so we don't have redundancy. Page six. We four paragraphs down, I guess. It says in the last line, a full presentation would be made at a public hearing. I think it was a public meeting that was referenced. A public hearing would have, that's different. And I'm pretty sure it was when we talked about it, it was a public meeting that was.
Okay.
Yeah, 65.
Yeah, would be made at a public hearing. Yes, it's a public meeting. Yes.
Page, there's nothing else on page six, page seven. Page eight, this is where we start correcting. J J1 and so on. Page nine. Page 11. 12. 13. 14. 15. 16. 17.
If I if I could, not not a correction, but I do want to note on page 15, the I just want to ask that everybody review the motion that the committee be comprised of trustees, Mark Brzezow, John Reiser, Kathy Knowles, with said committee. with said committee working with an interim administrator, Mark Thompson, and reporting back and making recommendations to the Board one week before the January B.O.T. meeting. I've, I've seen it restated, the charge of the committee, which is fine. I just want to make sure that, um, nobody thinks that this is not what was moved.
And you also wanted to point out that Mark Thompson has a C instead of K, I think, right?
Thank you for correcting that. So, no corrections?
No.
Motion. Okay, I wasn't sure.
No, no, just Mark with the C.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so we were on page seventeen. Eighteen. And page nineteen, um, I don't, I'm not sure what was actually said.
Where are you looking?
Uh, down at the bottom.
J eleven?
Under J eleven, it says, um, Flintoff explained that the list of items incurred. I think if he'd said costs incurred, which is what's said down below, I think that would be-
Why don't I say list of items and in, um, lists of costs incurred?
Yeah, I think that's the simplest solution. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And page twenty-one, unless there are any other corrections. Someone prepared to move approval of-
I'll move approval of the minutes for the December thirteenth, right on me.
As, as corrected.
As corrected.
All right, support, so we have, uh, motion by Reiser, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Those minutes are approved. Next set of minutes is from the special meeting of December twenty-seventh. Page one. I had a question, I was thinking, what is my question? Oh, it was the way that this was worded, it just seemed inconsistent with the way that the rest of the minutes are done, to not have the name of the person who's making the motion at the beginning of the motion.
Yes.
I would just suggest-
Apologies, yes, and it was, um, it was a motion by Flintoff and a second by Noel.
Yes. Um, and then, um, page two, are there any corrections? Page three, I just had a suggestion. I, um, I think it would be more consistent to, um, instead of saying at the top, my objection, I would, I would say Flintoff, Flintoff stated that her objection, et cetera.
My bad.
Um, unless there are any other corrections, someone prepared to move approval of the December twenty-seventh minutes as corrected. Moved by Palmer, support by Reiser, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those minutes are approved. That brings us to the consent agenda.
I, I will note for, um, roll call votes tonight, we're, we're gonna, per our rule of orders, we're going back through the order. So, tonight will be first Palmer.
All right. So, I realize that we probably should have addressed this when we were approving the agenda, but, um, there is, uh, an item in the consent agenda, the payment of the bills, that's, are, are we going to sort of speak to that?
Sure, the payment of the bills, I'd, I'd, um, updated it, and I think the model motion covers it. As we all know, our one finance person's unavailable. Um, so she was unable to prepare the proposed payment of claims, um, for tonight. And so, the model motion would be to delegate the approval of the proposed payment of claims for January eleventh jointly to the clerk, supervisor, and treasurer. We expect we'll get those out in the next four days or so. We'll review them, all sign off on them. So, I think it's okay.
Okay, and I know she also raised this question. The, um, invoice from WARMO would be included then? On the payment of the bills?
Well, the, what, what the Board would be delegating here is the authority that, you know, with my scrutiny and Will's scrutiny and Donna's scrutiny, that, um, whatever bills appropriate, um, that have gone through our process. I'm not familiar with the WARMO invoices. Is it something that's been approved by the Board yet?
It would, would that, by including it in the payment of the bills, would it be included in this? Or does it have to go through separately?
Correct, so it needs to get authorization. I don't know how much it's for.
I think it's over, it's five thousand or over or something.
Yeah, if it's over five thousand, it needs to be a motion by the Board.
Need to bring it to the next meeting. Okay.
So, hey.
This is just approval of the bills that have already been authorized.
So, I don't need to know what WARMO is, because I sure don't right now, but, um-
A Washington area recycling management authority.
Okay, thank you, the acronym.
Something like that.
Sorry.
I hate acronyms.
Sorry, in the room.
No, 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 sorry.
No, I'm sorry, we used an acronym.
So, that's, okay, thank you.
Okay, so anyway, we'll bring that particular invoice to the next meeting. Um, but, um, I would just want to clarify that, since usually when we approve the consent agenda and the payment of the bills, the bills are actually in the consent agenda. So, um, with that clarification, is someone prepared to move, um, the consent agenda?
So, move?
Moved by Reiser, support by Noel. Uh, please call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brzezow? Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Agenda adopted.
That brings us to reports. Um, the written reports are in the meeting packet.
I got mine late, so I handed out hard copies to the, um, members here. I know it's somewhere added to from Gellman Roads Committee. I appreciate everybody trying to get them in.
That's cool.
Wait, my turn?
John was gonna do it for-
From last night's and planning. Unless you want to wait.
Um, if the Board is willing to-
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't need to.
No, no, let's get, let's do it. Let's do it while it's timely.
So, Planning Commission met last night, um, and, uh, the, I got a, paperwork for, but what they did was they talked about the, uh, PUD, uh, that, which is like a special zoning ordinance that Scioto Township and other municipalities have that allow certain projects that have some certain benefit, um, to go in a certain location, kind of in contravention of what the zoning designation might otherwise be. You folks know all this, but it's, you know, we're not there yet with respect to the Planning Commission. There was input, there was input from, uh, people call in, people write in, people contact Luon, people contact Planning Commission members, and it, uh, kind of gets encapsulated into a document that Luon kind of manages and sends to us, um, for review. At some point, it's going to be approved by the Planning Commission, or not. But if it does, then it'll come up to the Board of Trustees, uh, for that to happen.
And, you know, with the PUD, something like that, that's so important, and I think, well, I guess it's something that we seem to use a lot in this complex. I wonder if when the time comes for the Planning Commission to consider it, if the Board might also be invited to that meeting to at least get the full dialogue around it. The final meeting on it.
You mean, yeah, 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 it's not like you're not in.
Oh, no, I know, I know, but sometimes we've had, uh, joint planning and Township Board meetings.
Okay, i- i- if you're suggesting a joint meeting, I can broach that with Jen.
Yeah, yeah, when the time's right. She's, she's pretty good at process stuff.
All right, um, we also, the Board also took action on the rezoning, uh, consistent with the master plan and an area that, uh, a, a partial property on Delhi that's currently zoned A1, but is marked on our future land use map as low-density residential. And it's a butts in R1, and then it butts in A1 to the north and an A1 to the south. And, and, uh, so it's in this general yellow area, which is low-density on our master plan. And then north of it is green, which is agriculture and kind of rural density. So, that's going to be coming before this Board, and that's the, the request to have it go from A1 agricultural to R1 low-density for the division of property to put what will likely only be two, maybe three houses, because there's a wetland that the, their landscape architect and the owner want to preserve. And there's a wetland that covers, like, kind of a multiple parcel that they just can't build on. It won't perk, things like that. So, that's, uh, look for that to come. And the final item, uh, is, we talked about future planning projects, a Jackson Road corridor study potentially, whether we should plan for community solar or DTE solar, what, what, what's our position? And how should we deal with solar? Um, potential affording, affordable housing strategies, uh, and then, uh, carbon neutrality. Um, Mandy, uh, who's also a planner and the Township Supervisor in Pittfield might come in and give a, a kind of a talk to us about the thing. So, nothing's coming on that. Those are kind of Horizon items, as an FYI. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Um, are there any other questions related to reports? I know that there's one report in the bundle of reports that is related to agenda items coming up later. Um, are we gonna talk about the report when we get to those agenda items?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank, I guess publicly, the Fire Services Guidance Committee for the nine-page detailed report they did. I think there might be some people, or there were some people in this audience who were part of that, I understand.
Right.
Yep. So, thank you for your work on that. And members of the public, if you haven't looked at that, please do. Um, and that's going to be the subject of a upcoming meeting. But thanks for your work on it in the report. A week from today.
Yeah, I know, I'll be here. All right, well, if there's no further questions about the reports, let's move on then to our public hearing. And, um, this is a public hearing on the Parks, Recreation, and Open Spaces Pros Plan for, uh, those who are keeping track of our acronyms. Um, and we have with us, um, consultant, Chris Nordstrom, who is working on this for the Township, uh, with Carlout Wortman Associates. Um, so, um, typically, we, uh, call a public hearing to order. And then we, uh, whoever's the expert, and then open it up for those who would like to, uh, address the court during the public. So, we're calling the public hearing on this to order at, I guess, eight oh eight. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for having me here. Just want to say I've been working with Scioto now for just over six years. I was here when the first Parks Board was formed. Been helping out with the TAP Committee, and now seeing it evolve again. It's, it's enjoyable to see how quickly things have been evolving and how much they've been evolving with the Township. For those of you who have not been through the recreation planning process before, um, we, uh, there's, there's basically two reasons why you do a recreation plan. Uh, this is a little bit different than a comprehensive plan, which has that ten-thousand-foot level looking at the entire Township and every aspect of it. It focuses strictly on open space preservation, parks, trails, and that sort of thing. The main reason you do this is that you have a guideline to help you as you move forward over the next five years. Michigan Department of Natural Resources requires that you have a recreation plan on file with them, a current plan, in order to be eligible for grant funding through their programs. And they offer three different programs, the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, Recreation Passport, and the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Scioto has received funds from the DNR in the past and has helped to pay for portions of the Zero Pathway. And I think there's a definite intention to go, go forward again and try to get more funding to help you finish up the Zero Pathway and other projects that are within the area. We went through quite a bit of community outreach for this project. Uh, we had an, uh, online survey available with hard copies of the survey here at the Township Hall. We got about a hundred and seventy-one responses this time through. Um, for perspective, five years ago, we had a hundred and sev- so, you know, right, right on track with where we were the last time. Um, we also had an open house, um, yeah, I believe it was in August. Um, a little bit disappointing turnout at that one, a little lower than I would have liked, but it was still, you know, some good discussions going on. We had about thirty people here total. Um, what we heard, um, was not surprising. Uh, the last plan was all about, we want to preserve open space. We want to make sure that we save this land as much as possible. And at that time, you didn't have anything other than stolen preserve. Uh, you had some other properties, but that, that was the one that was really open. This time through, I think there's a little bit of a shift, and people were more interested in saying, okay, well, we've got these properties now, how do we get to them? Um, and when you look at the, the survey results, the number one, uh, most requested amenity was trails. Um, that is not uncommon. Um, I'm working on eight different recreation plans this season, and in all eight communities, trails is the number one item that people want to see. So, that was certainly part of it. Um, the new item that came up this time through was maintenance, um, and access. Um, and that makes sense. Again, we've now got an opportunity where we have these properties for residents, and people are saying, well, great, how do I get to them? How do I get in them? How do I enjoy them? Uh, so I think that's something that's going to be coming up quite a bit more. Um, I want to make sure I'm not missing anything out here. Uh, but, and otherwise, it was, again, then the other top response was simply just preserving natural resources. Um, there wasn't a desire to see a bunch of large megaplex active-use sports fields. Um, there was some, uh, if you look at the top ten items, you could kind of break them into three or four categories, depending how you're looking at it. Um, people wanted multi-useable bike paths and walking paths, rustic walking paths, which are, you know, it's kind of moat paths through, through parks, natural areas. Bathroom stands out as a little bit different. That's something that starts to imply that there might be a desire to see something, if not truly active use, but more of a traditional park than what you might have with, again, using stolen preserve. Um, wildlife observation viewing sites, interpretive nature trails, fitness and exercise trails, again, is one that comes up that's a little bit outside of the traditional preserve model that we've enjoyed here in Scioto. Picnic areas and pavilions, again. You can start to see this kind of shift towards, we'd like to have something that's a little bit more, uh, traditional. The one that always comes up, and every time I see it, I laugh because of the cost, an outdoor swimming pool. I was speaking with another park manager, and to put in an outdoor swimming pool, you're starting at four million dollars, um, and going up from there. Uh, so, while, while we're hearing the desire for that, it's probably not something that is, would be, um, it's certainly not something that's going to happen in the next five years. Let's put it that way. And then Nature Centers was another one. So, again, you can see nature, traditional playgrounds, or, or, uh, excuse me, parks. Playground structures came in at number eleven, and I, I bring that up because Jessica and I had a little bit of a discussion about that. Um, and I, certainly when we get into the, the public hearing or the, the discussion portion, I'll, I'll talk more about it that time. You've got a mix of residents here where you're starting to see some younger families moving in who do want to see that traditional, uh, setup, playground, play area. Um, and since you don't have, other than a couple of private schools, you don't have it like an Ann Arbor school where you, you might be able to go and take advantage of their existing playgrounds. Um, there may be a little bit more of a call for playground structures here. The question is, what form does that take? Um, there were two properties that were really looked at with, you know, a little bit closer, uh, view. Um, and that would be Marshall Park, where we talked about the idea of putting in a natural playground, which is climbing logs, uh, stones that you can jump from stone to stone and that sort of thing, a little bit more imaginative play. And then here at Township Hall, uh, with the last recreation plan, we had recommended putting in a more, again, traditional playscape. And in fact, it had applied for a grant at one time for that, that didn't come to fruition. That's something that's certainly, it's, it's open for discussion, let's, let's put it that way. Um, and then we did receive some comments on the plan, um, about two items that I, I definitely agree- And then we did receive some comments on the plan about two items that I definitely agree with. One, there was a recommendation in here about the possibility of a Parks Commission. I've since spoken with a couple of my colleagues and a couple of other people. And while there's definitely benefits to that, there, there could be problems with that as well. And I'm very much fine with striking that from the plan. I think it's, it's controversial. And again, I don't see it happening in the next five years anyhow. So I don't know that that necessarily needs to be in there. The other item that came up was concern about the pathway map and making sure that we're very, very explicit about what that map represents. Which is, if all goes well, these are routes that we think would make a lot of sense to help get people from different properties to another property. You know, there's certainly never been any intention of going on somebody's property without their permission or using eminent domain or anything like that. So I will definitely put some kind of a disclaimer or a box on there to make sure that that's very, very clear. The last thing I'll say about this, when you look at this plan, there's a lot of money represented in this plan. And, and I think everybody recognizes it. And the reason is, this is very much an aspirational plan. We don't know what's going to happen in the next five years. I mean, if you went back five years ago and said, hey, in three years, everybody's going to be locked up in their house for about a year. Because of this disease that came out of Wuhan, China. People would have laughed. And you wouldn't have thought that there's the sudden explosion of people that wanted to get out and walk on trails just to get outside and have some kind of social interaction. So there are some items in here that most likely won't happen in the next five years. But by having them in this plan, it does make you eligible, should you decide to go forward and apply for a grant for one of them. To, to get some funding for that. If it's not in the plan and you go out for a grant application, the DNR is going to look at that and say, well, you didn't even identify this as a wish. And so it's going to kind of knock your chances down of getting that money. That's why we have this a little bit broader. There's some things in there that may or may not actually come to fruition in the next five years. But it's certainly something that people have identified a desire to see happen. So with that, what I'd like to do is kind of step aside. I'm going to sit over here. I would hope that the members of the public would like to come up and speak. And I'd certainly want to hear from you and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
So is this an action item or just a public hearing?
It's a public hearing.
I'll actually say something.
So please come on.
So is it, is it, are we going to be voting?
No, not, it's not an action item on tonight's agenda. It would be an action item on next meeting's agenda to allow time to absorb the input that we get. So if there's someone who would like to speak during the public hearing, please come up and speak.
This is short and sweet. We, I raised three kids here. I think it's a great place. And we had a lot of activities. And there were a lot of trails. We have the whole Metro Park. We have the Delhi. Actually, I don't understand why people don't use those parks more often. Behind Liberty, there's free tennis courts. And I mean, I look at these plans as interesting and, and great that, but I look at the money of it. And I go, what's our priorities? And I look at roads. I look at the, the fire safety issue. And, you know, sometimes I think like, when the planning commission goes, oh, you can cut all these trees down. And you get a bonus density for that, but then they're over here buying up this wetlands. I kind of go, some of that confuses me. But I think we need to put the, some safety and the fire and, and just how much money do we have? I mean, everybody has to live like that at home. How much can you afford to spend? Eggs are, if you're lucky, you can drive down to the farm, down, down, down Z even. Picks them up out of the refrigerator, puts your cash in there. But, you know, I just, I look at, I don't think this inflationary, I think we're going to have stagflation is my personal opinion. And I go, let's get some of the infrastructure situation settled first. But that's just, I'm all for parks, but I do think we have a lot of activities we can do here. Thank you.
Would like to speak during the public hearing on the Prose Plan?
You didn't see that, did you?
And I'm Kathleen Brand. First, I want to let you folks know that I have been very involved in the, what's been going on with these committees. What they're looking at. I've attended probably most of their meetings, the Parks Meeting, the Land Preservation Meeting for the past year. So I, I am informed. I read the prior plans, Prose Plan from 2018. So I am informed on that. I analyzed the items in the prior plan. And I, I see interesting things. Okay? So for example, well, I have some questions too. So what types of outreach were used to solicit public feedback? What outreach?
We advertised in the Township Newsletter. Mary Gillis wrote, helped us write that, that letter or the story. That went out to every household in the township. We had flyers here. I'm not sure where else we had them. And then it was on the Township website as well.
Okay, so only 171 people from the township replied to the survey. That is barely scratching the surface. In 2018, this township sent out 3,000 notices to households to participate. We didn't do any of that research, outreach rather. So I don't think it's representative of what people really want. What I think it's representative of is the people on the communities, what they wanted. Anyway, the open house was sparsely populated. I was here. How many people attended that? I think you said 30.
That was 30 to 35.
And how many of them were on committees? Yeah, that's what I saw also. So when it came to interacting with people, I heard a comment, well, we're, we're all on committees. So I guess, you know, we already know. I mean, I was here. I heard that. I wrote six responses. And I'm not sure I see all my responses in the public input here, but I'll not challenge that because I don't have records. On page two, it talks about key findings. And it only mentions residents' desires to see open space preservation and trail development to continue. That's all, the only key finding that's in there. There is no mention of other resident desires for other recreation choices as detailed in the appendices. In the page numbers 110, 114, I would really encourage you folks to, if you read anything, read what the people are asking for. Because this, this is not, this is a public hearing. It's not a time.
It's five minutes per speaker, public.
So I encourage you to read that because there are significant things that people are asking for that are not included in this plan. In the 2018 plan, I went and counted, there were 13 requests, individual requests for dog parks. That is not addressed in here at all. That continues to be asked for. On page 114, feedback, 57% of the people ask for dog walking. Doesn't have to be a dog park, but that's an activity they can't participate in. They also ask for other recreational activities. It's not just a park. Playgrounds, activities that folks can do. Those are being ignored. And so what I see in this township is that we have this huge focus on parks and pathways. I appreciate that. I love all of those kinds of things. I think we're missing other desires. And by not looking at those other desires, then we only do parks and, parks and pathways. If you look on page 110, there's charts, they talk about the usage of the existing parks. 68 to 80% of the people do not even use those eight or nine parks. It's huge. That's absolutely, lots of people talked about the park that's right here at Township Hall and is not accessible. There were prior plans that, the prior plan had action plans for some of those things to take care of Township Hall Park. To pursue activities for family, seniors, dog parks. None of that is in here. And I think that's a disservice to the residents. I will say that I attended all those meetings. I was in one of the last meetings of the Parks Advisory Board. And I specifically asked for a draft copy. And Andy Turner said, no, that's not for public consumption. That I could not have that. Only, I would only get this copy that had been marked up. And he went so far as to say, because we want to review it to decide what is important. Then why the heck are you having surveys and public input if you're not going to do it? And I believe that's exactly what happened. Here, let's just make this parks and pathways. And then let's try to do as much budgeting and take it from roads, take it from here, take it from there and put it into parks and pathways. I support parks and pathways. The only recreational thing in this township that people can do is they can walk. They can ride a bike. That's it. There's nothing for seniors. There's nothing for kids. I can't do these hikes anymore because I had ankle dislocation and I just can't do it anymore. So there's nothing for seniors, you know? So I, I think there's missing stuff in here. I encourage you folks to read the public feedback and get some of that stuff in there, please.
I was thinking as I was listening to everybody else's comments and also to Chris's presentation. Couple of things that do come up that are good ideas. I do wonder with how many miles of trails, obviously, some of them and pathways do you go by? Businesses or, for example, the Township Office. Where are the rest of the trails and pathways that go by places? Where are people using the restroom? I'm sure that's also a problem on the border, border trail in some places, but just something that came to mind. I also think I may have been at one of the meetings or listened to it that Kathleen attended. Or I saw some sort of plan for what they wanted to do with the park behind Township Hall. I'm not sure what came of that, be it good or bad. I encourage the township, you know, when we go back through this process, and maybe we can document this somewhere, add it to a calendar or something to come back to. We can utilize a lot of the residents that are involved to get the information out about these meetings, you know? Not just this, this particular meeting for the Prose Plan, but also for other things that come up. I mean, Pam's done a great job volunteering. So has Rob, as far as getting people informed and trying to reach out to their neighbors. Just some thoughts as I was looking at this, but ultimately, I think a lot of these things are good ideas. I do worry about some of the financial aspects of it, how we're going to fund, you know, maintenance. I know, there was a conversation yesterday, we had TDA meeting where we were looking at some of our funding and what we had available. And we can't necessarily pay for ongoing maintenance. We could pay for building something or developing something. But who takes care of everything as we build it out? But we only have limited staff to do that with. Thanks, guys.
We have anyone participating remotely who would like to speak during the public hearing?
So we're going to have Mark, Mark Frishow at some point. Can you do a little Zoom training for the board?
Teams guy, so.
All right, first up is Rob Paxton.
Thank you. I proposed a community center last year. And part of the rationale for that was that SIO Township, especially this central part of SIO Township around Z even 94, is a play desert. There is literally nothing for families to do. There's no playground. There's no soccer field. There's no basketball court. There is nothing. One thing the Fire Committee talked about was buying property for the future fire stations. And making them into playgrounds so that the township owns the property, can use it for the good of the, the public. And then as the requirements of the township change and evolve and grow, the new fire stations can be built on those sites. One thing I was really disappointed in was that while I was at the, the Prose Plan Open House. The only people there were me and Kathleen and a father and his son. And I had, I was there for, I don't know, an hour or more. And had lovely conversations with many of the committee members. And it was a great open house. And I was really disappointed that it wasn't better attended. There was a lot of great information there. And, and this township would have received a lot better feedback if we'd gotten more people to that open house. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Jillian Carey. Jonathan?
Hi, excuse me. Hi, I think I undersold my support for Mary Gillis earlier, so I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up is Jillian Carey. We're sorry, you're sick, Jillian. Welcome to Public Common.
Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. This is regarding the surveys back when we were on the master plan. Excuse me, there was a, a survey that had gone out. And I took it and then I wondered if I could take it again. And I could, so I took it 10 times. And also with the Prose Plan, it was the same thing. So there's got to be a way that for residents to only take it one time. Because as far as the numbers go, I, I don't, I don't think that they're accurate. And of course, we can do better on the communication. We, we have close to 17,000 residents and we can, we can get them engaged more. Thank you.
Thanks, Jillian. Any other comments? Any other public interested in speaking on this plan? Is he not?
One thing I do want to address, Jillian's.
Can we move to close the portion, public portion?
We, we can close the public hearing and then if you want to make a comment. So we'll, we'll close the public hearing at eight thirty-three. And Chris, please make a comment.
Yeah, it's, Jillian, I agree with you that, you know, we do need to try to limit the number of responses. The challenges that you're getting, you're coming, you can have multiple people in the household who want to respond to a survey. And if you say that, if you limit it by IP address. And say you can only have one entry per IP address, he has potential for limiting husbands or wives' comments or children's or what have you. One thing we did do is go through and look at the IP addresses that entered or that responded. I didn't see anything, when we looked through, I think there were a couple of instances where we had duplicates, but it was one or two or three. I don't remember seeing any where there were 10 of them in a row. So either your, your, all of your comments didn't get put in, which is a concern. Or you did this through multiple computers and I, I'm not sure. So I just wanted to assure you that we did take that into consideration. We were trying to make sure that we didn't have somebody stopping the ballot box, basically. I just wanted to assure you that we did take that into consideration. We were trying to make sure that we didn't have somebody stopping the ballot box, basically.
Just a couple of comments. I think, I think these folks made a couple of good points. We have a lot of trails. I mean, I'm, I'm a trail guy, cyclist guy, use all that, but they're just a lot of like just dead trails. I mean, they make no sense where they kind of start, start sucking my line. And I think Mr. Patterson made the point, why don't we have, take someone, put it in allocation, just kind of like a leash, that that seems to make a lot of sense. Everybody could use a license. Kids, old people alike, just go in there and watch the kids play. If nothing else, right? That, that seems like we probably do have enough trails. I mean, if you had to say, okay, when's the time to do something next? I kind of have to agree with that one.
I think there are two points to consider here. First, you've got to need parks and pathways knowledge that is specifically for development of parks. And I'm not sure if community, community center would fall under that. I don't know. It's, 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 that's a question. The other component that I, I've heard a couple of people here talk about concerns about fiscal responsibility and, and when you talk about the new community center, I've been involved with three potential centers in the past three or four years. They're starting around fifteen million to twenty million.
Maybe when I say community center, maybe, wait, let me, let me maybe shave that back a little bit. I would be thrilled if we just had an overhang building with a couple of restrooms. You know, hey, you could have your, you know, a couple of grills, right? You can bring and have a little picnic, a little party or whatever for more than one family. She probably maybe kind of like four or five. So I can do the fifteen million dollar thing. I got that. That'd be really nice, but we can't afford that. But I gotta agree, a lot of these trails, and you could put in like a, a little trail cams and just see how many people go on that trail in a week. And you might be sadly surprised that it's maybe one or two people. I mean, so we, we take all this money, we take the allocation of the trail, development, all that stuff, and then it just sits there. Whereas Mr. Patterson's point, hey, that would be something that everybody would use. You know, basketball cards can't be that expensive to make.
Yeah, and so, and that's kind of going back to what I was saying at the opening of this, that I think there is a desire to see a more traditional park put in place. So when you're talking, instead of saying community center, you're talking more with technical, Julian type thing with restrooms and.
Or half a day or whatever.
And, and that's certainly something that, that the plan does get into, that it does suggest at one point that there is a desire to see this moving towards that direction. With the shift from a, a, a tap committee and a parks committee to now a, a joint committee, that may be something that comes up. One of the challenges you've got is you've got eight hundred thousand dollars a year coming in on that, on that village. Park development, just to answer your question about how much are basketball courts, you're probably talking anywhere from fifty to seventy thousand dollars roughly to put that in.
So fifteen million?
No, no, absolutely, yeah. All right. So it, it is something that I think that is on the radar and it is, you know, one of the recommendations was to consider opportunities for developing more active use there. Now, a lot of, the, the challenges historically, Scio residents have been pretty clear that they're more interested in passive use parks than not active.
So out of a hundred and sixty, you had a hundred and sixty responses, one percent, right?
I, I agree. And I, that is, it's a challenge, but I will say again that that's the same amount that we got the last.
It's probably the same one percent.
It, it could be. So one of the things that we also recommended in this plan is that the, the new parks director and, and the, the parks, parks, pathways and preserves committee should do is try to have more regular meetings. Even if it's quarterly, where you can sit down with residents and talk to them face to face. Now, they do have monthly meetings. But you have the same four or five people that go to those. It, it is a challenge. I, I, this outreach is something that is, is, is challenging across the board. It's.
Let me throw this idea.
Sure.
I'm interrupting you.
No, 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 it's fine.
I'm Italian. It's not that I mean to interrupt you. If you're an Italian family, you don't get a word in unless you interrupt. Right, that's the way it is. This is how it is. So an idea, propose maybe a park, like that has, I, I, I get the idea of the dog thing, Kathleen brought, that's a good idea. A lot of people have dogs. And you have a basketball court. You have a, you know, place for the older folks and you have, you know, the things that, you know, the community area that we talked about. And say, hey, what do you think about, rather than saying, what do you want? Why don't you say, here's what we're proposing, kind of do, flip the, flip, flip the script. Here's what we're thinking. What do you guys like? Oh, that's a great idea, but add blah or add this, or do we need that? That kind of thing. I think we'd probably garner a lot more response. Like if you sent that to me, hey, we're thinking of building this park, what do you think? Rather than just, we're doing path and parks, I'm like, oh, sure, right? I don't care. I think if you did that, you'd get a lot more feedback or what is, start with something. Like I've learned in my business, if I just go to a customer and say, what do you want, Mr. Cusman? Like, I don't, I don't know. But if I go to him and say, I'm thinking of this, what do you think? That's sparking a lot of their imagination of what's possible.
No, I think that's, that's a good point. I'm going to throw one other caveat here and if, this is not meant to be argumentative, it's just something we have to consider as we're going forward in the next five years. The way the parks and pathways knowledge is worded, they cannot acquire land using millage dollars. That millage dollars has to come from the land preservation committee.
That's where I'm going to start when it's my turn to ask you questions.
No, and please, I think you know where I'm going with that. So certainly.
So I'm on the board of our homeowners association and we reach out and we say, what do you want with respect to capital improvements? And they want three things. They want to link sidewalks and trails that don't go somewhere, a sidewalk to nowhere. They want to be able to get from one subdivision to another subdivision or from one subdivision to a park system. This, this, this whole holy ill-thought-out sidewalk within a damn subdivision that you can't get to the one next door so that kids can't ride their bikes. It's silly. So linkage of existing systems is important to the residents in, in, in my sub. Two, a dog park. They want a dog park. And, and those aren't too expensive. And the other, they also want pickleball, what a surprise. So they want to convert the tennis court into like a pickleball court. So and, and those are pretty small. So to their point, we, and I've got this map. We've got all this green space. So to what extent, when we're acquiring land that ultimately goes here, do we have, do we reserve, like, why couldn't we have a dog park on some of this green space to, I mean, put in the parking so that people can park there? Maybe put in a restroom if that's feasible, or a picnic shelter or something like that. Put in a dog park, like, would, would that violate the, the conservation easement to use it recreationally? And, and if it does, how do we change it? Or is that something we could think about? Because we've got all this land that people can enjoy and now it might not be nature to put in asphalt to play hoops, but it might be to let your dog run or, or something like that in, in, in a fenced off area. The confluence of land preservation committee and, and green or recreation.
I, I think those are excellent questions and you know, I don't know the answer to that. I can tell you that my understanding of the land preservation commissions charter is exactly that, that you are preserving open space. Not necessarily for active use or, or parking. Some of the parts on the properties they have, Marshall Preserve, or excuse me, Marshall Park, for example, is one that they did acquire and that is being used now for more.
We're buying things in fee simple absolute and then we're sometimes buying it back, subject to an easement that we retain.
Right. So I, I think that these are really good questions to talk to the LPC about and see what they, see what they.
Thursday at four o'clock when I'll be there. As their liaison.
Right. So, you know, I, I mean, I, listen, I, I hear you. And again, you know, these are in there and I know the dog park did come up again. And the reason we didn't recommend putting in, I think there is language in there and I, I apologize, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty. But in one of the action items, it is, you know, consider opportunities for dog park creation. So these are, those items are in the, in the plan. It does give you an opportunity to do that. You just have to find the right property to, to work with and that's, that's something that's, again, it's a challenge. Because with a dog park, for example, you want that to be somewhere that is centrally located, highly visible, near a population center. But then the challenge is as soon as you say you're near a population center, the folks that are next to that dog park have issues because now the dogs are barking and you're disturbing their peace. So it's, I, I think it, it's, it's a very nuanced, difficult conversation, but I hear what you're saying.
Is this, is this, is this document something that that the committees adopt or is it something that it goes to the board and adopt? Is it there? Is it there yet? Is it ultimately there?
It'll, it'll come to us next, at our next meeting.
Okay.
For, for a vote. So the input that we're getting this evening, well, you're going to sort of synthesize that. I, 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 I served on the Parks Advisory Board for years, so I know some of these conversations have been going on for years too. And some of the ways that we tried to balance the different demands is we allow for people to walk dogs in the nature preserves. So there was, there was a big debate about that, whether to allow dogs at all in nature preserves because you're sort of threading a line there because dogs and nature, sometimes there's a conflict, especially if people let them off leash. So the.
That's the problem.
Right. So, and so walking dogs is allowed and, and the nature preserves in Sciop Township as long as they're on a leash. But the, the kind of dog park that I think people are looking for is where you can let your dog run horse free. And that's, and that's, and we had a, an idea to put one in Marshall Park. But then we realized that there's a problem not only with distance from neighbors, but if you put a dog run right next to a pathway where you have bicyclists, that's also a problem. So it, it's, you know, you, you don't want to put the dogs in a place where you're, you're going to drive them crazy because the bicyclists are going past.
That's what you have a master plan.
Well, exactly, right. So, so, so you, so that's, I think this is what Chris was getting at. Finding the right location for a dog park is more challenging than, than it seems.
Exactly. Well, I would say for both the dog park and for an, an active use facility. I, I do agree that there should be, and the, and the plan does say that consider opportunities to develop a more active use park or a traditional park and it's like and it does say to consider, and, and I'll make sure, I'm going to go back over this and I've got some notes from, from Jessica that I need to go through too. I know Anna's out for the rest of the week, but hopefully we're going to sit down early next week and we can kind of hammer through some of these issues. But at this point, there isn't necessarily an ideal parcel that fits the needs for an active use park or a dog park. And so that's something that, what the plan would recommend at this stage is to consider development of these facilities and to be continually looking for those opportunities as they arise.
The other, the land behind Township Hall is probably is the place that we were looking at for an active use.
It was. And as Mr. Hathaway will recall, when we developed that concept plan showing soccer fields on there and a pathway basically going around it, we heard very quickly from the Scio Flyers that that was not an acceptable solution. And the Scio Flyers have been leasing that for I don't know how many years now. Yeah.
Well, it, it, it puts us, it puts us in conflict with the, a, a user of the space, but that doesn't mean necessarily that that user has veto, veto power over.
Right. But what, what that, that discussion did lead to was the idea of can we come up with some kind of agreement with the road commission with the property behind their buildings to lease some of that land for use for a dog. And that might be an ideal location for a dog park or for an active use park. Because it's public land already. It's flat. There's no wetlands to be concerned about. There's no issues with noise with neighbors. So I, I think that's something that, and that, that was in the previous plan as well as this plan. And that's a discussion I think that would behoove you to continue to have with them. See if that's something that might be a possibility. Otherwise, something along Jackson Road, if there were any properties there that might fit that bill. You know, these are discussions and that this, it, it goes a bit beyond the level of a recreation plan to say, look at this particular parcel here. We think that would be a great one. Instead, it's just saying, keep your eyes open. As these, these come up, we are hearing that this is something that residents like to see and it should be something to be considered.
Please go ahead.
Yeah. So thank you so much, Chris. And I, I did give Chris a redlined document. So, you know, take it or leave it. Some big ideas, some small ones. I would say, you know, I think that we've had so much changeover on the board. Besides John on LPC, I don't think we have anybody really plugged, plugged into these. So I'm, I'm kind of feeling that disconnect. I think also Anna Cone is still pretty new. She's doing an awesome job, but I'm hoping with her onboard that'll help with the community outreach. And I'm hoping over time that she'll have much more of this kind of sense of the community of what people want because for the first time we have a staff person in house kind of looking at this stuff. One big kind of policy issue for us to look at and I, I want us to get ahead of this is, is make sure that we're compliant with ADA. Not just where we, we want to be everywhere, but particularly for the federal funds. I don't believe anybody's particularly tracking that and the ADA requirements that, that come with using federal funds. So Mark, that's probably something we should look at. I'll also say, John, I think that the Open Space Fund, the Millage Language for Parks and Paths and for the Open Space Fund, there is more flexibility than ever has been used and we need to look at it. The Open Space Fund is for preservation of waterways, development of parks. There is a lot more overlap and I would ask that we at some point soon have a meeting of the new Parks Group, LTC and the Board of trustees because the way that LPC has been prioritizing those funds may be a little different than the way we want to now since we have enough of them and want to open some of them up. Also, as we mentioned at the last meeting, when we combined the two groups to create the PPP committee, we lost transportation planning. Right? We kind of, not completely. But right now, if I have this right, our PPP committee will be what's considered the kind of federally recognized TAP committee. Thereby being, making us eligible for those federal TAP grants. Is that correct?
So you, you would be eligible for those federal TAP grants regardless.
Even without them.
Yeah, yeah. So it's helpful.
Okay, Jan.
Right. It's certainly helpful to have a voice on that PPP committee who is interested in, in, in trail development so that you're getting a little bit more feedback, but, but it isn't a requirement for you to apply for a TAP.
So, because what I'm thinking about is, is again, you know, we as a board need to figure out who's going to do our transportation planning for the township. I don't know if that's you, if that's somebody else at Carlisle Warman. We have a bus millage that is coming due. We're going to need to put on the ballot, decide what we want to do with it by about November twenty twenty-four. And, and I had a kind of ad hoc conversation with a couple of people on the planning commission. It feels like we have a bit of a void in turn, and we may not, just correct me if I'm wrong, between like the transportation versus the recreational pathways.
So I've been participating on the TAP committee. This is on advisory level for what, three years now, something like that. And, you know, I, I, and I've been certainly been trying to get Anna up to speed with what was discussed. We still have a monthly project management meeting where we talk about ongoing recreation activities at this point. And we certainly do want to have the, the two chairs that came over from TAP and from Parks and to the PPP participate in those meetings so that we're all on, out at the same level. I'll, I'm happy to continue that role, acting as an advisor to the best of my capacity. You're, you're getting input from OHM as well. You couldn't ask for a better group there. So I think that you're in pretty good shape as far as that goes, but certainly as you look to fill those seats on PPP. You know, if you can find somebody who's got trail and pathway planning experience and bring them in, I think that would certainly be beneficial.
Yeah, I, I was really thinking that that might be handled, but it's all the other transportation work.
Okay.
That is, that we're not yet holding, I think. So we need to figure that out.
Right. Uh, cause I did hear that at the, the last, uh, I, I missed December's, you know, it was November, I can't remember now. Sorry, my COVID hit me and it was, so I missed that, that last meeting. But, um, I know that there was concern about, um, are we looking enough at, uh, public transportation and electrical vehicle stations and so on. So I think that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, but my understanding is the PPP committee, we explicitly said the topics you just talked about are outside of that scope.
Okay. Okay. Then, then again, I'm, I'm a little outside of that.
And then, that's okay, but we just took it out of the scope of that committee and we need to put it somewhere, particularly if we're gonna go back to voters in less than two years.
I, I think part of the problem is that it's never hit a hole. There was a.
Right.
Kind of wishful thinking that we could take the transportation element and sort of toss it into, um, TAP and that that would be a place for it. Um, but then the TAP committee decided to focus on, um, non-motorized pathways as its primary focus. Uh, they didn't exclude other things, but that was their primary focus. And there's only so much bandwidth for a committee. So that was the, that was the priority, that was the focus. And these other things like bus, buses and so on, I mean, to some degree, we've, we've addressed some of those things through other means. We have, you know, the DDA has looked at, you know, putting in bus stops and finally succeeded in doing so.
Yeah, no touch camps whatsoever at those streets.
So, so we, we are getting more ideas for our bus stops, but, uh, we have bus stops now. And, um, I think there are ways that we could address transportation needs. But it's not in the context of the Parks Preserves and Pathways Committee. That's just not the place for it.
I, I almost wonder if that might, if, that might fall under the Roads Committee. If that should be part of their charter as well. I, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Are we getting a little field?
We are.
It's a master plan for parks.
We are certainly getting a field from that.
I know, I would like to take a five minute, nine o'clock break before, between.
Well, unless there's, unless there's another pressing question for Chris, um, or Chris, if there's something else that you want.
Well, I would say, I'm sorry, sir.
Well, just at least the plan today would be to have adoption of this plan on two weeks. There's been some substantial discussion here and, and I guess my question is if there are going to be amendments or modifications to the plan, do we want to have this on the agenda in two weeks or do we want to see it again? I don't know what kind of time constraints there might be. So I want to put that issue out there as well. We may be up against some.
We are, we are up against a February 1st deadline.
Right. Um, and, and the challenge is that we do need to have.
The state.
We, we do need to have the public hearing minutes in the plan, um, and a resolution.
And this, and the state to be eligible for our next round or?
To be eligible for, so the, the season runs basically January 1st to, uh, December 31st. But you would submit each year by February 1st. So if you did not submit by this February 1st, that means you're not eligible for grants in 2023.
So if I might be, uh, to amendment of this plan, is that possible to?
Absolutely.
Have, be in place so that there's eligibility for funding. And at some later point, I'll come back and revisit some of these issues.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You can amend it later.
In effort to make, to make our agenda process as smooth as possible, we would expect to have adoption of this plan on the agenda in two weeks of the 2024.
Yeah, to, to meet.
Yes.
Under new business or unfinished, under no business?
And, and then we would.
Somewhere.
Somewhere. And, and that I, I would just say, you know, and that we would just all intend sometime over the next six months to, you know, really get together and do some substantive amendments.
And that's something we can definitely help you with, um, basically it would be an appendix to the existing report. Showing that. And then you would have to have a second, another public hearing, formal adoption again, but it can be done.
Yes, we are. Why don't we take, uh, uh, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Members of the public for your comments. Um, we'll take a, about a five minute break.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So we're recessed until 9:05 or 9:06.
Chris.
Hey, Mark.
I already.
You have gotten it already.
All right, thank you. We're back from our recess. And we are now moving on to unfinished business. We took J one off the agenda. So we are now on item J two, which is the possible action to rename the job of township administrator to township manager and revise the job description. This is the first of three resolutions from the ad hoc committee. And we skipped over your report during report. If someone would like to introduce the work of the committee at this point and introduce this agenda item.
You can introduce the work and then I'll lead the agenda.
Okay, okay. This is obviously a result of item J five from the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, being referred to a committee to kind of look into it and report back. We did our report and our report is part of the, our our record, our minutes, as we've already looked at, the J five committee report. And in that, we recommend a couple of things that SciO Township renamed the position of the administrator to that of a township manager, because that's what the general township law in Michigan law has it as. That's what our ordinance has it as. That's what frankly, our history has it as. And that's what other township have it at, have, have it as. But they also have other monikers as well. But that's what we're recommending. We're also recommending that we hire a full-time finance director. And at this juncture, that that person report to the township manager. And we're also recommending that because of the hiring of the township manager on a full-time basis, albeit an interim basis, and our intention to retain a subsequent full-time township manager, that the job description that was from two thousand and twenty-one for the supervisor be rescinded.
Repealed.
Repealed, repealed, obviously, other than the statutory duties that that supervisor has. And there are various statutes in Michigan law, whether it's MCL forty-one or the Uniform Budgeting Act and probably other places as well. We don't have any intention of impinging on those statutory duties through the repeal of the job description. Those are the three general recommendations. Kathy's gonna kick it off, kick off the first one and either Mark, I, and Kathy can speak to others.
Okay, so agenda item K two.
A J two.
Sorry, I'm working with the old.
Sorry.
Yes, J two. To rename the job of township administrator to township manager and revise the job description is basically came about as a result of our committee, committee evaluation. We want to, we talked about revising some of the language in the job description. We ended up modifying two sentences in it. They were the sentences that pertain to the description of ultimate authority over BSNA software. So the specifics with those two sentences are described in the background. And they are also described in the resolution. I do want to formally insert another whereas clause in the resolution. I have it written out, Jessica, but this clause will be inserted after the last whereas clause. And I will read it in full, but it incorporates MCL forty-one point seven five A in the resolution. So here is the whereas clause that I'm proposing. Whereas MCL forty-one point seven five A provides that a township board may employ a township manager, comma, who shall serve at the pleasure of the township board and who shall perform duties lawfully directed by the board.
Except those duties. Would, would you, you, you cut off the end of the sentence?
But this was, this is the manager.
And you've cut off the end of that sentence.
Well, we can go have the whole.
Just about five more words.
Except those duties that are delegated by law to another township official unless consent has been granted. We can put the whole.
Yeah, that's the full sentence in the law.
The whole thing in there.
So say that again, whereas MCL forty-one point seven five A.
Provides that a township board may employ a township manager who shall serve at the pleasure of the township board and who shall perform duties lawfully directed by the board. Except those duties that are delegated by law to another township official unless consent has been granted.
Say that last sentence again.
It's a phrase.
Phrase.
Except those duties that are delegated by law to another township official, comma, unless consent has been granted.
Kathy didn't come for our legal counsel order, did we?
Yes, our legal counsel has reviewed this.
Okay.
The legal counsel has reviewed all three of our proposed resolutions for tonight.
Okay, awesome.
And that's really, you're parroting forty-one dot seventy-five A.
Yes.
Yes, that talks about township manager.
Right, and also that the duties can't be delegated if they're assigned to a particular official unless consent is granted. So that's been my objection to these boards' actions over the last year.
No, you're addressing that concern, I think.
So we're putting the language of the statute directly in the resolution.
So does this come, is this in the last, be it further resolved that?
She just suggested it as a whereas, not as a result.
So it would be after the last whereas. So this would be the last whereas.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Whereas is aren't as binding as therefore be resolved.
Yeah, this is just what Kathy's suggesting. I think the discussion's just started. I don't think I need to start.
Um.
It's, it's a statute, right? So it's binding.
I, yes, the first sentence was paraphrased, but the, everything else is exactly taken from the statute. Yes.
Thank you.
Um. Let me see, if there was anything else about this particular one that I wanted to mention. You can see we've got a redline version of the township manager job description as exhibit A in our packet. And we've changed the terminology from administrator to manager throughout the job description and the title is changed.
Oh, I see what you missed. There's an administrator you missed, but presumably we can.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll get it.
Well, the key thing is, you know, not the marked up job description.
Okay, I'm done. I can try to answer any questions if there are questions.
There are discussions?
Sure, please, go ahead.
So I have many questions. So first of all, I just want to thank you three for meeting and working so hard on this stuff and trying to wrap your heads around it. I appreciate that, especially two of the three members kind of dealing with the elephant in the room and trying to deal with some of the, you know, major issues. So thank you, everybody, for working on that. So I'll, I'll try to start with just some questions. I think I have about seven. So the name, well, first of all, was this resolution reviewed and approved by township attorney?
Yes.
Which one?
Omier.
The title of the resolution states that it's also to revise the township manager job description. Does it change the job just to, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is that the name of the resolution, it says to rename the job of township administrator to township manager and to revise the township manager job description? I didn't see that operative language later in the resolution.
The two sentences are modified, dealing with ultimate authority. So that is a change.
That's what you're talking about. Okay.
And they're all in the resolution.
Perfect. Fundamentally, the first whereas, why did you choose? Why? Because it was July twenty-fourth that this board six zero approved the township administrator job description, and that's the job description we used to recruit David Rowley with Amy Sell. And it was that job description that, you know, I, my resolution of two weeks ago, whenever it was, I was trying to, I asked that the board re-adopt that July job description so that we wouldn't pull in a good person like Mark Thompson into this. So why is your proposal? Because we've, you know, we adopted it on July twenty-fourth, we amended it on August seventeenth, and we amended it again on February twenty-second. So it seems strange to me for the legislative history that you just know the First Amendment, but not the original adoption.
Well, the First Amendment is a more recent proposal, but we can have that discussion.
Well, my, you know, if we were to go back to the July twenty-fourth job description, I would support that.
Well, is there, is there a challenge? Is there something that job description you don't, you have a challenge with?
Yes, it's, it's part of the complaint I've had in court against this board are, are the provisions. It's what I was trying to prevent pulling Mark into. Look at page.
Specifically, can you give me a specific line within that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, July twenty-fourth, if you look at exhibit C on my item, just because it's there, but I'll tell you what it was. We had a, Diane Benson was a HR consultant, worked with everybody, got consensus from everybody on the administrator job description, and it was professionally developed. And it was right here. It looked very, very similar. We adopted it, sent Amy Sell out. She started the recruitment for David Rowley. Just twenty-four days later, the board had a special meeting on August seventeenth and made the following changes, most of which, they, they look subtle, but two were, they added a line about ultimate authority over BSNA administration. It had been silent on that.
Okay, but we, we.
Two, no.
Changed, right?
But it was silent on that. It, it said nothing about BSNA administration in the unanimously approved job description. It was also silent, said nothing about controlling access to the software systems or, you know, electronic.
These are the two sentences we modified.
I'm, I'm, and the third thing is, and you're assuming that the modifications, I know they're enough for you. They may not be enough for me. So.
They were better. This came about as a result of compromise.
I did not talk to you, so I don't know that it was compromise in all fairness. Certainly with you three, and, and I get it. And again, so thank you. And this is the first time we're talking about it. So, so, but to your point, the changes from July where we had consensus to August was that there were, to August, the change was there was additional administering financial reporting. And I said, because it was adopted at the same meeting where there was a supervisor's job description, our legal counsel advised us, the clerk is responsible for financial operations. This could not, these resolutions should not be used to interpret, to take power away from the clerk. The job descriptions were not approved by the township attorney at the time, so all of this goes into that. What going back to July twenty-fourth would be, would, it's, it's basically all the same stuff, but it doesn't have the offending provisions where it inserts the administrator slash manager between the clerk and the IT provider, the clerk and BSNA, the supervisor and BSNA, the treasurer and BSNA. Each of us who is the individual custodian for each of our records and responsible for each of them. We'd never had that before, so that was unprecedented. And so the, the changes that were made, one, on August seventeenth, the change was made to add administration of financial reporting. And I objected to that. And then on February twenty-second, it was made to add the couple on BSNA and then some other things unrelated to this issue. Question to you, Kathy. You reference, one, I'm asking why you're referencing August seventeenth, and two, I'm asking, bottom line, which job description does this resolution adopt or reaffirm? Because you reference a middle one.
I know, I do. We did. We had the second one. And that was because it was the more recent one, not entirely the most recent, but it was more recent.
And it's not the one that we just entered into a contract with Mark for.
It's close. I mean, we knew there were going to be some modifications.
We talked about that at the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We knew there'd be some modifications.
No, I know, but I know that, but, but I'm just saying, if you're adopting, if what this group, the three of you, because, because I don't think you're trying to, to do what I think this would do. If we were to adopt the August seventeenth version, the August seventeenth version doesn't even have those BSNA items in there.
I know. We talked about.
Oh, then you want to add them back in?
No, Jessica.
Okay, I'm not following.
We talked about deleting them completely.
As if they were the original.
Yes. But there was some concern with John and Mark that they wanted to add them in, but revise them.
Okay.
Didn't want to take them out completely.
So John and Mark, in my original resolution, where this committee was formed to review it, I assume you've reviewed the July twenty-twenty-one job description. And it's basically the same, except it doesn't include those provisions. So I, I will say, I, I had objected at the time thinking it would be, I, I said, and I even said, I hope it would never come to this. But, you know, with this language here, what could happen is somebody could actually take control of the records that are mine and mine alone to be responsible for. That I had hoped, you know, would never come to pass. And then in May of twenty-twenty-two, Jim Murdy had been appointed. This is important because it, he pointed to and pointed to again and again, that your resolution provides legal authority. This board's resolution provided legal authority to remove my access that BSNA had given me as clerk. We had never put an administrator or the board in the middle of it. So I guess I'm asking you two anew. I, I am surprised to hear actually that, so township attorney Homier. Are you, can I, can I get an email from him saying that he, I mean, he says he stands by that language because he hadn't approved the February language. You remember that?
He reviewed the three packet materials and the three resolutions prior to this board meeting.
What does review?
Some suggestions.
Okay.
But I'm wondering, you're talking about what happened in.
The legality.
You're talking about what happened in May. And as I recall, some of what happened in May was a result of the supervisor's job description.
No.
No?
Well, I'm sorry, excuse me. It was a combination. So.
Jessica?
Sure.
Don't interrupt. Be careful here, but I, I'm still struggling where you find, we asked the question, what's the challenge? I heard everything, but just pinpoint the language. You gotta give me specifically what piece of language specifically within that job description are you having a challenge with?
It should not exist in the administrator and manager's job description.
What should not exist?
The two bullet points, the one regarding BSNA and the other regarding access to information. Now.
So let's be specific. Let's, let's take one, because I want to help you. So I want to understand.
And I want to be really specific is that we adopted it. The, the professionally developed township administrator job description on July twenty-fourth, it omitted those. It never contemplated those. When we had a professional do it, before the board started amending it on August seventeenth and February twenty-second for political reasons.
It didn't omit them. They had never been there before.
Exactly. And what I'm saying is, they had never been there before because they were added over your and my objection and without township Homier ever saying, we, we grilled him on it.
So can you read me the language specifically? Let's just act like it's one at a time, so we can get them one at a time. What language bullet point specifically in the new proposed agreement are you having a challenge with? Just so I can, so I just need to understand.
Oversee administration of all BSNA modules pursuant to SciO Township Board of Trustees policies and directives.
Right, that's administration. That's not control, that's administration as directed by the board.
Administration, and that's why I wondered if you had a written attorney opinion because in the law, administration means control and creation. And so administration, it may be. That's why I was surprised a little dumbfounded. And if township attorney Homier really stands by this, I'm surprised he didn't shoot an email to the board.
I can email him right now.
I would email, and because, because I'm, I'm actually shocked and it actually, I would be really surprised based on all of the briefs he's written on behalf of the board. Not that the board has ever answered my complaint, but on the briefs, he has never responded. It's not funny, John. The board has never answered my complaint.
The board answered it through a motion to summary disposition, which was granted, which is what I understood. You can file an MSD in lieu of an answer as an acceptable response in a lawsuit. That's what we did.
The board responded. The board did not file an answer.
So, so Jessica, just in, in my world, when we talk about administrator, I have, we have an IT administrator. He administers the system. He does the care and feeding.
Which is what we have now.
Well, if you want to maybe call it change to care and feeding, I, I don't know what term you mean. He's, he's delegated.
Yes, no, excuse me. Go ahead. I know.
Are you Italian?
No.
She interrupts too.
All right, well, I'm, I'm trying to get to a resolu, that satisfies you and satisfies the, the board. So maybe just use the right words, because you have a different view with the word administrator means.
Exactly.
I'm sure you would my interpretation.
Yes.
We have an IT admin. He, there's only one guy who touches the keyboard and who has access to BSNA.
That's what we already have.
The rights.
We have that.
Right.
Through Matt Smart, our IT person, and through BSNA.
Right, so then.
That's what we've always had and that worked well prior to the board adding people to the mix.
So keep your mouth to me. So I'm gonna try and finish.
Okay, sorry.
We'll call it even now.
Okay.
We're calling truths. So again, typically what would happen in, in my mind anyways is again, this IT person's the only person that touches access rights. He can't change it. Donna wants to make a change, it's got to go to him. Will wants to make a change, it goes to him or her. It happens to be him, right? That's just what I'm interviewing, right? It could be a girl, I don't care.
Even a woman.
Or a person.
Yep, no child labor.
Was called person, a specific person. And though, he is directed by the board. That person is directed, there's directives by the board of what access has been granted to you to make sure you have full access, to make sure Donna has full access and whatever Mark, access Mark needs in his ancillary departments, I'm assuming they need some level of access to for like the sewer department or whatever. That's the way it should work. Again, maybe we're using the wrong words. Administers, administer means a different word to you than it does to me. But that's the way it should work. And since that IT person reports to Mark, right, that's who that person reports to. So I hold him accountable. I thought, I don't, I don't report to the act. If you want something done, I don't care if you go to Mark, just, just go talk to, you know, this person to have done. I don't really care. But the point is, it's, we hold Mark responsible, because that person may, may change. I don't know who that person is. It's, it's one of his functions. As for example, I want software built. I don't go down to developers and tell them what to go do. I talk to our CTOs, I go build X. He makes sure it gets done. So it's no different here.
So I, I think we're on the same page on part and then need some tweaking on the latter. So I'm, I'm with you on how it should work with the IT professional, which we have, have always had, with BSNA, which we've had, have always had. And how it used to work, should work again, is, you know, you talk to the, you know, enterprise administrator, the BSNA person, the IT person, and they have hopefully some guidance, but they know the laws, you know, as BSNA does. So when I started as clerk, I was like, hey, I'm the clerk. They're like, hey, good to meet you, and provided me the access that I needed. So never before has the board had to write policy because those policies are in the law.
You're probably right, Jessica, but never before is probably a township going through the friction, just to be born here, happy between the treasury side and the clerk side. There's a lot of, as I understand it, a lot of friction that's occurred about who has access to what or doesn't have access. Wrong on that, Donna.
I, I don't argue anything. I have what I need in.
Yeah, I don't know that you're right about that, actually.
If I'm wrong, that's fantastic. I'm just trying to reduce the friction.
About, about people not having access to what they need in BSNA.
I said, I.
No, no, I know you did, but he's asking if your team. No, no, I know you did, but he's asking if your team doesn't have access.
My understanding was some parts of your team had frustration, they weren't allowed access to certain. Certain, uh, books or records or something like that to that effect, if, if I'm mistaken on that.
I understand what you're asking, or what you're stating.
Right, so I'm just trying to make sure.
But it was not really. If there's more to that.
Okay.
We can talk about.
And I think, you know what, we also went from, I mean, look. I just, you know, coached several of you through Zoom here, I'm forty five years old. Not trained as an IT person and still somehow time and time again, I become the person most comfortable with technology in the office, that's a problem. Me and Donna, Donna is all over, no, but Donna, you do, no, but Donna, you do a great job of learning new things. You don't, you know, worry about it, you just do it. So we move from. It, you gotta remember the, um, progression here is we had, that the change was. Not that our IT person was no longer our assessor and a managed services provider. That was part of it, BSNA, Rebecca and I were managing the book, Sandy was the finance director and so she properly. Was managing the general ledger along with Rebecca in finance and there were controls there. When Sandy, um, was appointed by Donna to become the deputy treasurer and managing the cash. Hand, having authority or, you know, a function there. Um, I and she, we all communicated about it, I said, um, you shall no longer have access to. Post to the general ledger, which is a basic internal control. That. Um, was unquestioned. We also had a new assessor start, when Warsha started. She knew BSNA really well and she wanted to do a lot of things in it. And so I gave her some administrator access, tried to get up to date, so I was just helping people. I remember there was one time when I had also. And maybe this is the instance, I don't know, it, it all flurried up and nobody really, um, gave any specifics about it. It was all this like, you know, I'm feeling restricted, I never heard the details. But there was one time when, um, Sandy had become deputy treasurer. And the BSNA, you know, permissions, I, I thought she no longer needed access to AP. And I was wrong because she was still doing the AP for the DDA, so I changed that back. So there was never any, I, I certainly never had any, um, if, if there was anything as a mistake, I. I never had any confusion about what role treasury had or anything. And so then, fast forward six months, six months. Everything's fine, work when NetSmart got our IT person, our BSNA person. The board, um, appointed, um, Jim Murdy as interim administrator. Will appointed Sandy as deputy supervisor, deputy treasurer. And that's when, and this was already after I had challenged the February twenty second. Amendment to the administrator job description in court. Those two additional bullet points that had been added, I said, you know, I object to this, what could happen? Somebody, a staff person could be directed by the board to come in and take the books, so to speak, shorthand, okay? I thought, oh, Jessica, hopefully you're just, you know, being alarmist, you know, something. But no. In May, May tenth, the board appointed Jim Murdy, May thirteenth. Um, is when he removed all of my access that had been granted by BSNA. Provided himself with access and this was a combination of, you know, authorities that were appointed to by the supervisor and by. The administrator at the time, hold on, John. Um, and to relate it to different of these job descriptions that had been so controversial. And over that weekend, there were, you know, hundred and fifty five entries made to the prior fiscal year. Now. I will tell you, all of those, I'm sure you noticed in our, in our audit. Um, even though we went back and we hired Nick Armalagos as CPA to go back and double check all those. Even though the auditors, the auditors had said, don't do it, the, I had said, don't do it. Um, during those times, um, there was, there was no explicit legal authority for them to do it. But there was, I think, an interest. Um, you know, it was under this idea that they were gonna start prepping for the audit by, by doing these journal entries. You probably saw in our recent audit with Plant Moran, one of the five material weaknesses. And three violations of law and regulations, one of the five material weaknesses was a result of this exact incident. The segregation of duties, during the audit, we identified that individuals with access to post adjustments to the general ledger. Also had access to cash receipts and custody functions. We recommend that the township implement adequate mitigating controls or further segregate these functions in order to avoid. Misappropriations of app, assets. At our management meeting, the auditors explained that that was that period in May. When Sandy had been in there and so. I, I just have to say that that is exactly why. I had said, no, it was not necessary, the auditor said no, and then here we are and so. I would say, I don't think your revised language takes care of the internal control issue. So, because, because the administrator has no role in. You know, between the, the treasurers, I mean, no, direct, you know, treasurers and clerks. Statutory duties and the internal controls tend too easily, why would a board even involve itself in this?
So, let's, let's hear from John.
So, um, just as a matter. Uh, uh, of, uh, clarity. The resolution might want to say, whereas on August seventeen, twenty twenty one. And February twenty second, twenty twenty two, the CYO Township approved. Job descriptions for the township administrator, because we did it twice.
Three times.
Okay.
Well, July twenty fourth was when it didn't have the offending provisions and then they were added.
Was it approved by the township board on July twenty fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
Unanimously.
Then I, I'm okay saying on August seven, on July twenty fourth, August seventeenth and, and February twenty second, twenty twenty two. I'm okay incorporating all three dates, the extent they're accurate. I think that what, what Kathy is suggesting to modify, by the way, is the February twenty second one. So I think that, that I, 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 I think that the.
Yeah, which one are you adopting and modifying?
The one that's in there is Exhibit A is from February twenty second.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think, I, I just, just to give it the clarity to proceed, uh, you know, um. It's gonna be resolved that the, that the job title and that the changes made to the. Township managers, February twenty second, twenty twenty two job description, so that we're clear. And I've got them printed out here, uh, Kathy and I've gone through them and, and, uh, you'll notice. That this is the what, what it is, so, so that's just almost a point of order, but, but. This was supposed to be the easy one with the other two to follow, the trickier ones. And it's disappointing not that these aren't important discussion. So. I am flexible, malleable, open to discussion that about with what. It's, I assume that the, the one that says oversee administration of all other software. Apps pursuant to CYO Township Board of Trustees policies and directives is okay?
That one, you know, the, the problem, I, I don't know, I don't know that I can live with that.
But I guess, so, so I, I, conceptually, what we're trying to do is. Instill in the township manager, like. Uh, administrative control that's not statutorily, uh, otherwise assigned or delegated by the board. So the buck has to stop with someone and I think it should be, I, I, I'm trying to restore the position or. My, I have an interest, it's not my vote, it's everyone's vote, but my, my interest concern is restoring. In the township manager, uh, it, the administrative duties and oversight. Someone has to be in charge of who gets to, who gets Windows and PowerPoint and Excel, that.
Absolutely.
But that has to flow down from somewhere and I think it should be the township manager. That's, and, and then with respect to, I don't, it's, I guess, someone has to decide. It seems to me that BSNA modules are a sticking point and is.
I mean, they weren't until the board involved itself.
But they're a sticking point now.
With whom, besides me, I have never heard the other side.
Well, there's, there hasn't really been an opportunity for the other side to speak yet.
Well, there will be, well, there will be, and I'll yield Charlie.
And this is helpful clarification.
But, 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 but does, the, should Will have access to some BSNA modules?
Of course.
And should Donna have some access to BSNA modules?
Of course, and we always did.
So, no, 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 and I'm not saying you guys should or shouldn't, hell, I don't have a clue, but I want someone to be in. The buck has to stop somewhere, so why not with the manager? I don't think the manager, I, I, and, and it does say. According to Board of Trustee, uh, uh, was it direction directives, but it, it's not like. He can go rogue and like not let you do stuff, because.
Well, the, you know, John, and I, I hear what you're saying, I will say that is exactly. What happened and the state we're in, we did not have a board policy. And we didn't need the board to be involved. What happened and today, today, Jim Murdy. Still has complete control and I would argue custody of my records, the supervisor's records. And Donna's records.
Then if we vote for this tonight, it'll change.
Nope.
It'll eleven oh one.
Nope. How? I mean, first of all, today, I mean, Jim Murdy has. Taken and changed, changed permissions so much and, let me tell you, there was no need. We have an IT provider, that is who should control that. For example, I think what we're having is a little bit of difference of. Like what we mean by supervise, taking a step back, like for example, Mark supervises the utility director, the fire chief. The IT person, all of these specialists. I wouldn't trust Andy to, you know, know how to turn off a fire alarm if it's blaring. Because that's his job as fire chief. Okay? I don't think Mark needs to be held responsible for that, that's specialized knowledge and specialized access that only the fire chief should have. I think about that similarly with NetSmart, our IT provider.
Makes sense. Um, so what, what we did, because there's a reason why they must have put these here, so I, my understanding was, they put these laws. Let's, let's Jessica, let's give somebody else a chance, I want to hear at least from, I, I, I think I understand your side and your concern, warranted. Let's hear from. Either of you two. You must have put these in here for a reason, I wasn't here when that happened, what was the reason for putting those insertions into the, into the job description?
Well, so the reason that we put the language in there and it wasn't specific to BSNA, it was all software, is that. Uh, for whatever reason, um, Jessica was in a position of having administrative authority over. The software and she still does over a good portion of it. Um, the BSNA was a particular sticking point because, um, in order for other people to be able to do their jobs. And perform their functions on behalf of the township, they needed to have access to some portions of BSNA and. Jessica was the admin and was making determinations about who had access to which portions of BSNA. And she would sort of turn it on and off and so it was causing problems. And we, um, put that language in there so that it was clear that just as all of the township employees. Um, other than the deputies, report up to the township administrator slash manager. Um, so the administrative authority over the software would reside with that central administrator. And that person could make those determinations about who needed what access in order to do their job for the township. Now, what happened when, um, Jim came in is that that authority was exercised. It wasn't exercised by David Rowley when he was the township administrator, I don't know why, but that is, you know. Doesn't really matter, but Jim came in and one of the things that he moved to deal with very quickly was to get the township. Working on preparing for the audit, that was something that was seen as a priority, it was something that hadn't been making progress and we wanted to move that forward quickly. And that was why he acted so abruptly and just as Jessica described, just as Jessica described. How she inadvertently took away control it Sandy needed and then gave it back. The same thing happened in that situation. Um, Jim took away some administrative access that Jessica needed and administrative control that she needed as clerk. When soon as that was clarified within a day or two, it was reversed and given back to her. Now, the other modules of BSNA that have been claimed to be a part of the clerk's, you know, bundle of authority. That is part of the lawsuit, that is part of what is disputed here and I would argue is not true. That that is part of her authority, but that is part of what's at issue here. If the clerk has administrative authority over all BSNA modules, then she's back in charge, she's back in. Charge of giving access to people and controlling who can do what. And that is why we put it with the township administrators, we wanted it to be in the hands of somebody. Who was actually making those determinations about who needed what and what kind of access in order to do their job.
Okay, and Donna, I'd like to hear from your, your view.
First of all, I agree whoever needs what they need gets the access. But the clerk does not need access to accounts.
For what?
To accounts receivable.
Okay.
Accounts payable because it's part of the treasury area. Never taxed, never assessing.
Of course.
And, you know, anything dealing with cash, we have delinquent personal property, which is another tax program. No, the clerk should not have access to those.
No one has asked for that, I have not asked for that.
But the, some of the communicate case I see, just to clarify.
Or, we gave you four permissions to all eight modules.
No.
We, we, we resolved to do that.
No, that has not happened as of today.
Well, we resolved it, we, we.
We resolved that she could have access to what she needed in order to perform her duties as clerk.
No.
Who's deciding what she needs?
Oh, that's a question, great question.
She is, according to the MCL that we have heard and we've all read, a keeper. Uh, she's responsible for general ledger, that's the wording.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Well, okay, the record, whatever, whatever the right word is, but that doesn't mean she runs all of the applications. To do that.
I thought we were gonna get back this document from this spreadsheet from.
Mark asked me to bring it to the next meeting, Mark, can I just, I wanna talk about a couple. Points, a couple facts, first of all, I have never had, and I've never been the IT provider for CYO Township. I have never had administrative control over software for CYO Township. The only thing I did, Mary and I learned how to use the website really well, so we help people sometimes. And, um, we learned how to, along with Christie and Fran, how to use the PEAK program. And, which is how we make our agendas. I just wanna be clear for the record, I have never, okay, second of all. I have never asked to have, nor have I ever made claim to have. Um, any access besides read, you know, over the tax rules, which are yours.
Should have clarified that way before we got.
I have been clarifying that since August of twenty twenty one and never to the assessing rules. There are twelve modules of BSNA, I have been talking about the eight modules that are the finance modules. Within seven of those are the journals and ledgers of the township, the statute does not. Within seven of those are the journals and ledgers of the township, the statute does not say. General ledger, the statute says the journals and ledgers, which everyone knows are financial. I will note on my clerk's report, I have a helpful printout of the MCL, I will also note. That I did check to see if the board's resolution made a difference. John, and I reviewed the 500 page document, thank you, Mark, for prompting. Jim Murdy, one of our two interim administrators for providing that to me. I will tell you that as of.
Point of order, we don't have two interim administrators, we got rid of the one in our last.
We, we did not, he is now employed, um, he is still employed, he still has full access to everything. Um, and he will be collecting holiday pay on Martin Luther King, I know you thought it was mean spirited, I thought it was clear. To take action on it, John, because I don't know when that will happen. I will tell you as of today, I have no ability to control who may or may not post to the journals, ledger, ledgers and accounts of the township. Access can be and has been repeatedly changed without my knowledge or my permission. My access has been restricted by this Board of Trustees to only certain journals and ledgers within certain modules. Not within all eight, which are legally to be in my custody and control. And against.
What eight I'd like to know are you referencing, I, I'm really curious.
Okay.
We were round and round.
Yeah, and, and, and I will say, and against my repeated direction and over objections, the board. Has expanded access to officials and positions beyond what is necessary for the financial accounting of the township and I detail those. This is important because we just got an audit finding, material weakness and this board, even with these edits. Will be continuing that.
Okay, but Jessica, Jessica, we said, you create the crud list, the create, read, update list. You, as long as, I, we put that power in your hands, you tell us what, what modules you want access to, what modules you need to write to, what modules you need to update, what modules you think you need to. You tell us what those are, have, run that by Donna, make sure it's just okay with Donna, run it by. Uh, our, our manager at this point, make sure it's just okay with them and we'll adopt it. Whatever it is, we'll, we'll, we'll say okay, right, the board will adopt it and make sure the manager administers. And they get you what you want.
But, but Mark, my, my problem is, is, is the, that line of authority that you just laid out is not what is the case.
I know, I know, but, but do you agree with that case?
I don't agree with the, the, the agree, agree crud, sure, but it does not go through the board. Because I.
We should go through that.
Well, it, the clerk, in fact, has custody of the financial records, the supervisor of assessing. It, we should work with our IT provider and BSNA as we always did before, as we always did before.
Well, you're saying how you don't like things how they used to be done and now you're saying you wanna have things how they used to be done.
I have always, I have, come on, Mark, come on, I have always said on this point. That this was an unnecessary uh dishonorable intervention by the board. And there is not ever a real problem that was trying to be fixed here, now, I will tell you, we currently have. Two enterprise administrators who should be the enterprise administrator, we have the IT provider and BSNA. But now we have four, okay?
Let's, let's give someone else a turn for a second, uh, Donna?
We ref, keep referencing NetSmart, which we contracted with, but when I went to them. I needed some help, that there was something not working, right, which happens every once in a while. I was told I could not, my request couldn't be honored, they can only talk with Jessica. That, it was, that was a very difficult setup.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Donna, that happened because they'd never talked to you before and that was standard protocol, they would reach out to either me or Christie and say. Cause, cause they don't know that you're the treasurer, they don't know.
I told them, I said I have an issue with.
Yeah, and they should have, yeah, then they, and then you brought it, and they responded and so as soon as they knew that you were the treasurer, they honored it. They were, it was just a learning curve, it was not that it had ever been set up. That everything needs to go through, through Jessica, Mary is shaking her head because I don't know how many times a day, she probably. Hears me say, why does everything have to go through me, right? Why can't anybody else use a computer?
Okay, are you calling on me, Will?
Well, I would call on you, I'm also trying to let Mike into the meeting, I don't know if you have control, if you have control or not.
It's not, no, no, I'm not, you can't find him.
Somehow this is not.
Oh, do you need?
Jane, we need, we need, I'm in.
Right. We just have to make him a panelist. We need a sound class for like boomers.
We do.
Oh, thank you.
I'll acknowledge it.
I know, that's why I keep pushing you to.
Okay, so I wanna say a couple of things, Donna, I've contacted NetSmart multiple times. And I've never had a problem, my questions initially were basic. Um, but I've had multiple interactions with them and they've always been helpful.
I'm glad because that never worked and I don't often have to call, so the one time I really needed him.
And I understand why that was frustrating.
So I wanna go on to another issue, um, in May, when we had. The incident where Jim Murdy essentially seized control of. The BSNA modules and shut Jessica out of the general ledger. I was having dialogue with her as this was evolving and that is what happened. And I ended up calling um Sean at NetSmart. Because we'd spoken many times before and. He asked me questions about authority, who had, has the authority here and. Then I later learned, he had been told by Will. That as a result of Will's job description. That he could control the enterprise administrator access.
And, and I, I will verify that, that is all documented and in NetSmart's um notes that it was surprising to get a call. On a Friday afternoon from the supervisor, but also it was, they referenced the, this provision of the administrator's job description. On BSNA, this is the bullet that had been added and David Rowley had never utilized it, because he and I both said, clearly. We need to write something up about the statute and give that kinda crud guidance to our IT person. So that they don't start getting pushed around, okay, and we were gonna do that, he left before we could do that. And so there is work to be done, I'd be happy to work with Mark, I'd be happy to work, I've got the crud I'm drafting right now, but as I go through it. What's so hard about it is, again, I don't have full access to all eight modules yet. And so I'm going through those five, that 500 pages and those many, many permissions, I'm working on the crud, I get it. I get where we're going to, but what I'm saying is that control should sit with our IT person. It, it should not sit with a political position of. What I'm saying is it can be, Mark is not, but I'm saying it can be, just as it was in May of 2022. I'll also say, my access has not been restored, our books are worse than they were 12 months ago going into this audit. This takeover of the books by the board has, has made them all the worse. And so we, we've gotta climb out of this and the board, I would urge you to extract yourself. From standing between a clerk and her journals and ledgers. Or a supervisor and his assessing goals, because the board is a separate entity from each of us.
So you would, you would have, I'll try to ask. Question, but can you answer no, you would have the IT person kinda be in charge of who has various accesses?
Yeah.
And then to who?
That's what it always was.
To who, to whom would an IT person report, to the board or to the manager?
Yes, to, to, well, the supervisor would be the administrator manager, but.
Supervisor, I don't think you mean supervisor.
I'm sorry, they're, they're supervisor, they're the person who supervises them.
Yeah, okay, okay, so, so.
But, but that's different, John, because I would hold, just as I would hold the fire chief responsible for enforcing certain fire.
I'm not trying to defrock you or do anything to you through my potential support of this, you know?
Yeah, and I think that is what it does unintentionally, because, because it is the. I've, I've never been, um, I, I don't know if I wanted to be frocked or defrocked.
I understand, I, I don't.
Yeah, that, that was new.
I, I'm not trying to strip away the duties.
Yeah, 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 no, that's fine, I know, that was good, I was like, trying to picture a frock and I, I got a little lost. So, um, okay, so, so, so John, the way that it should work is you have an IT provider. And BSNA who understand the statute, because we're all operating under the statute and that's why I'm troubled by. These bullet points that especially the committee coming back was, and I know revised and trying to get it where we need it to be, Mark, I get it. But again, the board, and, and so again, if Mike Homier has written something that says. You know, of, I mean, a Foster Swift memo that said this is legal.
Let's, let's ask Mike, this is why, this is why we brought him in so that he could answer this question.
But I wanna ask Kathy, John and Mark, has a township attorney told you? That bullet point does not infringe on the clerk's statutory duty?
On the phone, right?
He's, he's a panelist.
Oh, let's ask him.
It doesn't sound like you've asked him yet, okay, it's okay.
I didn't say one way or the other, I'm not gonna be interrogated.
I'm not interrogating you, John.
Let's ask Mr. Homier.
Um, Mike, are you able to chime in?
Thank you. Yes.
All right. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure which document actually we're looking at, so let's start there.
Item J2, it's, um, is what we're on. It's the rename the job of township administrator to township manager and revise job description agenda item. And I believe the question relates to specific language in the resolution. Um, in the be it further resolved clause. So that where it says, hold ultimate authority over BSNA administration and accessibility. Is changed to oversee administration of all BSNA modules pursuant to SciO Township Board of Trustees policies and directives. And hold ultimate authority over administration of all software, including assignment of access. Is changed to oversee administration of all other software applications pursuant to SciO Township. Board of Trustees policies and directives and the question I think, Mike, is whether you approved that language?
Uh, well, I certainly read the language, I didn't write it, um, but it's no different or it's not substantially different than what's there now.
Oh, in other words, it doesn't correct the problem.
So it's, it's, in a sense, it's a clear, what I, what I take from that is it's a clarification. That mean, that means something to the people who clarified it, but it doesn't change the import technically or legally from what it was.
Well, as I, as I understood it the first time, that the township manager. Would be the administrator of all of the township software, including assignment of access uh under those um. Different software programs, I, I, I don't have an issue with that.
So, Mike, is that, sorry, maybe it's a better question, either for Mike or the committee members. What Mike just said, where is that in your be it further resolved? Cause it sounds like what Mike thought is different than what you guys wrote. It, or is it not, he said oversee, what you have here is oversee administration of all other software applications.
We have, oh, we have two resolved, we have two, BSNA and non BSNA, that's kinda how I took it. This is not something that I proposed, some, some other committee members did, it's something that I'm open to, I, I, no, I'm talking about this.
Something I proposed.
Yes, so.
So I am, I, I will say one thing, if, as I look here, because you dropped the assignment of access. So that solves it for me on the second one, I would agree to oversee administration of all. I mean.
Doesn't administration of software include assignment of access?
Yeah, you could.
Oh, see, it kind of does.
I think that's okay, you can pull it down with access, I think I'd be okay with that.
Oh wait, will you?
As long as it's, as long as it's, it's understood that that's what administration of software is.
We just said pursuant to.
Okay, then, then never mind, I mean, it's the assignment of access that's a problem, so, you know, the qualified voter file, that's mine. The eight financial modules, the, the journals and ledgers within, those are mine.
We agree, a hundred percent, that's agree.
Well, then why is this board involved itself in the custody and control of records essential to the clerk carrying out her duties?
Jessica, for this resolution, we were trying to improve it.
I am not, I, your intentions are good, you three talk to each other and that is great, I think we've made some progress here. It is not your intentions, really, I know they're good, I'm just saying this doesn't fix it.
So I'd like to make a motion to be, make this suggestion, we vote to adopt this, we make a, we make a motion to adopt it. If it doesn't work out, if after Jim Murray's gone and she doesn't have her proper access, once you submit your crud. And that crud doesn't get invoked, then I am certainly more than happy to, uh, and willing to revisit this and, and make a change.
Are you making a motion?
I would make the motion that we pass it as is, if, but with, with the, with the proviso, this, once you submit your crud and that crud is not. Mutually agreed and that crud is not now enforced in the system, that this absolutely gets revisited. So I wanna make sure that she does have all the proper authority.
Yeah, which I don't.
Okay, but like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that happens, so.
Do we wanna modify and include the other dates?
I, I assume that those were already included, do we need to make the?
I know.
I, I think they should be in the body.
That they can be in the body of the resolution.
So what are the, what are the act, so the, whereas on July 24th, August 17th and February 22nd. The SciO Township Board approved a job description for the township administrator.
So that was one change.
Job, approved job descriptions.
Thank you.
So pluralize and remove the article and then now be it their, the resolve.
You know, and Kathy, you had suggested putting the MCL 41.75A in the whereas.
No, um, I mean, yes, in the whereas.
And then you whereas?
Yes.
I was curious why in your resolved, I mean, and it's, it's unfortunate that, that I won't be able to support this. Because the component of it that I would support, what I would support, I would support. Certainly, if, if, if we adopted the July 24th description, but this group doesn't wanna do that. What I would support is now therefore be it resolved that the SciO Township Administrator shall also serve. As the Township Manager per MCL 41.75A. And what that does is makes the administrator manager.
And our ordinance, and our ordinance, we've got, we've got a whole ordinance that.
But are you include, so, those are two different topics.
No, well, it's, it's part of, it's part of the underlying rationale, because that's what the statute says and that's what our own law says.
No, no, I know that, I know that, but, but it's in, it's not in the, you don't have the ordinance in the resolve.
It's in the body of the resolution.
It's in the solve throughout the report, it doesn't need to be in the resolve, we don't, we, we don't need to say why we're doing it in the resolve. We just need to say what we're doing, that's my opinion.
Agreed, but in the resolve, if, what, what, how I would interpret this is with keeping the ordinance in the whereas only and not the resolve. Is that the job description is being modified only by the change of these two bullet points? You're not incorporating the entire ordinance job description into the job.
That's correct.
Okay, so, but, but to my other point is, I, I think the more important thing than our ordinance, which is 20 years old and I think was put together. Copy and pasted with little thought.
Um, you're talking about section 2 dash 40, the township manager.
Yeah, it was copied as the superintendent from a charter, but what I think's important, now therefore be it resolved. That the SciO Township Administrator, and you can rename it if you want, shall also serve as the SciO Township Manager. Per MCL 41.75A, that is a change to our operations I would support. And the reason for that is because.
We don't, it's a political, it's a policy decision, we can do it based on, that's what we wanna do from a policy perspective, we can do it from a statutory.
I'm sorry, when I say per. I'm sorry. When I say per, I don't mean because the law enables us to do so. I'm saying per as in as defined by forty one point seven five A. And the reason for that is because a township manager as defined by forty one point seven five A is then in fact. The Chief Administrative Officer under all statutes. So I will correct something you said earlier, John Riser. You said that repealing the supervisor's job description wouldn't change any of the authorities under the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act.
Under under the supervisor.
The supervisor.
We're not even there yet.
No, she's making an analogy, a point.
No, I'm not. I am. It's not an analogy, and I am on point. The supervisor has no statutory authority under the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act. What who has authority under the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act is the Chief Administrative Officer of a township. By making the Township Administrator, the Township Manager as defined by forty one point seven five A. The Township Administrator Manager is therefore the Chief Administrative Officer, therefore has all of the responsibility by default. To prepare the budget.
I appreciate what you're saying. The supervisor can if we enable that. But.
But so could trustee Riser, so could anybody. It has nothing to do with this being the supervisor.
So in. I think I wanted to make a point. I was slightly interrupted, but that's okay. That's. That's what we do a little bit. Um. We also need to say that the. The the second resolve is going to should say the Township Managers. January twenty second, twenty twenty two job description because that's the one we're trying to tweak right now. Thank you.
Yeah, so is that a is that an amendment that the the proponents of this resolution would accept?
I would think so because it gives clarity.
Yeah.
To one of the three, to each of the three.
That it would.
Why don't you repeat it, John, exactly where?
The the second. Be it further resolved that two changes are made to the. Township Managers.
Job description.
February, yes.
Twenty second, twenty twenty two.
I'll reference it properly.
Thank you.
And and the third one that I had said just before you made that suggestion is. What do the proponents think about in the first therefore be it resolved? To include. The CYO Township Administrators renamed Township Manager. And shall serve as Township Manager as defined in MCL forty one point seven five A.
How is that different from what we've already inserted?
What is different is your whereas is give context and and the the reasons. It says whereas, but what you're saying is be it resolved that there be no question. That it is this position who shall serve as the Township Manager as defined in forty one point seven five A. When a general law township has a manager defined under forty one point seven five A, they become the Chief Administrative Officer for the. Hold on, for 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 the other associated statute. So we've got our organizing statute forty one, then you got like the. Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act and things. I think it needs to be clear and I would support having the person in this role be the Chief Administrative Officer. I think it's only in the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act that Chief Administrative Officer.
So we're gonna make this change. Are we agree on that?
It's a substantive change.
It is a substantive.
Yeah, and and I wanna.
And I want to make sure it's where you want to go.
I understand it in anticipation of it. I have it printed out and highlighted. I think what you're talking about is MCL one forty one dot four thirty four.
That's right.
One forty one dot four thirty four grammar in. It says that unless otherwise provided by law. Charter, resolution.
That's right.
Ordinance, the Chief Administrative Officer shall have final responsibility for the budget preparation. Presentation of the budget to the legislative body and control of expenditures under the Budget and General Appropriations Act.
Correct.
And so.
That's what I'm talking about.
I I know. I get what you're trying to do, and I think that's what the committee was trying to do.
Good. So would you accept my improved language?
I I I. I'm getting some guesses from the audience, but I want to take.
But you want to think about it?
I don't know that we vote via proxy. Thank you, folks.
Not an audience. Not an audience.
These people are the audience. We're clapping. We're clapping. That makes it an audience. Rob.
Okay, I want to ask Mike. Okay, I want to ask Mike a question here. Mike, could you define um? The differences between what we had initially proposed. I know you you weren't on that meeting then. Which was to include language about forty one point seven five. I can read it. What we inserted at the very end of the whereas is, and this was a whereas clause. Where as MCL forty one point seven five A provides that a township board may employ a township manager. Who shall serve at the pleasure of the township board and who shall perform duties lawfully directed by the board. And.
Set those duties delegated.
Set those duties that are assigned.
That are delegated by law to another township official unless consent has been granted. That is what we had previously inserted as a whereas clause. And now what Jessica's proposing is.
Into resolved.
Yeah, it goes into the resolved and it's slightly different wording. It does change some things and I want I want I want to hear it from you.
Well, I think it's a matter of semantics. I don't think it has any legal import whatsoever. The statute speaks for itself. The statute says the Township Board may employ a Township Manager. If you employ a Township Manager, you are permitted by statute to do so. That Township Manager then has certain responsibilities under the Uniform Budgeting Act as a Township Manager. It's as simple as that. You don't have to include it in the resolution. It's not required. The statute speaks for itself. Now. Can you put it in there? Sure, you can put it in there. It 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 doesn't have any more legal meaning just because you put it in there. The township is permitted by law to hire a Township Manager.
Certainly, I know we wouldn't have to. I I think what helps in CYO's case, Mike, is it distinguishes. Um, it it makes very clear that we are talking about manager. As defined by forty one point seven five A and not.
How else would you define a manager?
Well, it could be by our ordinance. It could be with 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 something else. I'm just saying, I think it's because this would be a shift in actual responsibility. From the supervisor to the Administrator Manager. I think it would benefit us all to be very, very clear. About what the intention of this ordinance is.
I was clear about it.
I was clear about it. We're all clear about it, but if you want to drive it home with this. Superfluous language potentially, I'm not gonna oppose it.
Yeah, I would like. I think the additional detail um is helpful, particularly because this board has had so many confusing resolutions about these things.
If it gets your vote on the resolution on this.
It's not going to get her vote on the resolution. She's already declared that's not going to get her vote on the resolution.
No, but I think that point would be improved.
Oh, okay, I understand where you're coming.
Yeah, just because of the BSNA ones.
Just a point to me. As Mike said. The law says we can have a manager, period. Okay. Now. I believe. A manager. A supervisor. I don't mean an elected position or whatever. We would tell them. What we wanted them to do.
Mm hmm.
Period. Keep it simple. We can do it. Yes. We'll, you know, the job description, et cetera. We ask or we tell them what we want them to do in their job. And. That person is running the daily operation of a township. Period. If you have a question, you go to this person.
I agree with that, but it's when it's when questions arise as to who does what that can be the potential. I'm okay just letting it work out and have at it, Mark Thompson. It's your problem.
I agree.
Oh, he's right here. I didn't. I thought you left.
He's not smiling. We hired a good man.
So so we have we have a motion to to adopt this resolution by Brazil. Is there a second? So we have a second from Trustee Noel. Um, and it would include the language that we have already talked about, I would say. Um, in terms of the dates in the two different places where we would add the dates. And um the whereas clause that makes it very specific that we're referencing MCL forty one point seven five A in case anyone needs that reference included in the resolution.
Yes.
All right, is there?
I have a statement. I just want to say that under forty one point seven five A, I do not grant consent to this board. Uh, to delegate the custody and control of the journals and ledgers of this township to the Township Administrator. So I will be um voting no.
So please, are we ready to call a roll? Please call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? No. Brazil?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution five to one.
Okay. That brings us to item J three. Which is um the the this item is Finance Director Duties and Responsibilities as Directed by the Board of Trustees Reporting to and Supervised by the Township Manager. And this one, I believe, um, John, you were the primary grafter thereof. Um, I don't know if Mike is sticking around to answer any questions just in case there's a question about whether he played a role in reviewing this.
I think he should be around.
Okay, so Mike, if you would stay with us, that would be uh good. Um, so uh, Trustee Riser, please lead us through this.
So I printed out my agenda when it was on K.
Oh, sorry.
So the K and the J.
J's become J.
Messing with my.
It's through the treasurer off a little bit too.
So is it K?
It's it's now K K three is now J three.
Okay, so I'm looking at what I had is K three. Yes, thank you very much.
It's the only thing that changed about it.
Um. Well, the the motion is to. Try to hire. Finance Director on behalf of CYO Township and have that person report, at least for the time being. To the Township Manager. I know that there are duties associated with the final financial records. That everybody has. I don't have them unless it's talking about reviewing the audit, but I know that uh the treasurer certainly does. I know that the law with respect to the General Township Act gives. Uh, the clerk. Um. Let me spell it out there. Custody of all records, books, and papers from the township. Uh, when no other provision for custody is made by law, the township clerk shall file it. It goes on, and we talked about that. In our committee report, and I would incorporate a by reference it 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 for this motion. The clerk. Has those financial records, a responsibility for financial records, but it also says. That the Township Treasurer shall receive and take charge of all money belonging to the township and pay over and account for the money. So the treasurer has to account for money and pay over money. So there's going to be interaction with the Finance Director that the treasurer has. I also believe that the Township Supervisor has duties with respect. Because it says that the Supervisor shall preserve and keep the books. Assessment rolls and other papers. So that the Supervisor has some duties with respect to financial records as well. So so and also the Township Manager certainly does under MCL. Uh, one forty one, we spoke about it, four twenty four. Uh, the uh Chief Administrative Officer of each local unit shall make an annual financial report, dot, dot, dot. Administrative Officer is a other employed or otherwise engaged by a local unit to supervise a budgetary center. And then it talks about uh unless otherwise in one forty one dot four thirty four, unless otherwise provided by law, charter, resolution, or ordinance. The Chief Administrative Officer have final responsibility for budget preparation. Final responsibility. That is a statutory duty. So if the guy who's sitting across from me has the final responsibility for budget privacy. Preparation, presentation of the budget and control of expenditures under the budget, which is every dollar we spend. Then by God, I believe that the Finance Director should, at this point in our history, re- report to the Township Manager. I have been and might be open to that chain, that 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 uh reporting structure changing. But but this is a committee work and this is the committee's recommendation. I know that other townships haven't report to the to the clerk. I know that other. I think this is a policy, a decision, a political decision based on what's best for the township. And I think what's best for the township at this point in our history with the derision that we sometimes have. With 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 the acrimony that exists that right now, let's get our financial house in order. People who are in the residents who are in this in this hall. Uh, are right when they say we've got an audit that we have to be concerned with. So let's empower our manager. And let's have the Finance Director report to him at least for the time being, whether that's six months, whether that's a year, whether that's two years. Whether a different board comprised of different people might think differently, as is their prerogative. So I don't think that it is a statutory duty, that's my opinion, that the Finance Director has to necessarily report. Report to to the clerk. I think that the Finance Director will work a lot with the clerk. I suspect, I anticipate that our manager is going to say, hey, Finance Director. Uh, go work with the clerk to help her to 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 work with her on her statutory duties. So that's why at this point, the well, I I may have spoken more strongly about this than the committee is, but. Yeah, uh, committee has, but I think that's why this is coming before us tonight. I don't think it's illegal in the slightest. I think it's a policy decision. And more importantly, I think it is the right decision for Township of CYO in early twenty twenty three.
Well, uh, Trustee Riser, are you prepared to make the model motion then? To um approve the resolution? Or to adopt the attached resolution to hire a Finance Director who shall perform duties and responsibilities as directed by the Board of Trustees and report to and be supervised by the Township Manager?
I would so move.
Do we have a second? All right, so it's moved by Riser, support by Brazil. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Please.
Um, I have uh some questions, but I think that that this is the wrong move for CYO Township. I think there's a reason why ninety percent of the townships have the clerk directly supervising the Finance Director. I also think we have a long history here before I got here in twenty nineteen that demonstrates the problems. With the Finance Director reporting to the manager and finance, therefore, kind of getting lost as the counterbalance to treasury. Which is the natural check and balance in a township. You've got treasurer, board, clerk, three entities that keep themselves in check, okay? And that's the way that it works. Now. I will ask a couple of questions. Did the committee find any township in Michigan? Um, where the Finance Director for that type of position did not report to the clerk? And it was over the clerk's stated objection. Over the clerk's objection as as you would be doing here tonight.
You can actually ask. I didn't really look. Uh, I did a cursory look at one time. I know the majority of the uh local townships have the. Finance Director report to the clerk. That is true. I don't consider us right now, as Mark just stated, a standard township. We're highly dysfunctional right now, very, very dysfunctional. So I I don't know how much that applies. I did ask Mark. And you said you have had Finance Directors report to the managers. Is that correct or am I? I don't know.
Oh, I know they have, but over the clerk's objection in a township.
How would we know that?
I'll answer that question as I said here before. This is the first township I've ever worked for, so I don't have any of that experience. Every other. Place where I have been manager, Finance Director, report to the manager.
Sure.
Those have all been cities or villages, not towns.
That makes sense.
But that's every place.
So a question. Oh, sorry.
I so I wanted to say something here. I do think the Finance Director should report to the clerk. However. Given where we are as a township right now. I think we've got a. I think we've gotta stabilize some of our interactions. We have, we've worked on the dysfunction. And so at this time, I support the finance director reporting to the manager. I think that. In theory, it can work in an acceptable way. And I think that Mark will work with you and support you in every way.
Well, as I did with David Rock, I don't have any concerns about Mark.
I'm saying that we all need to look at the situation that we're in. We're in an unusual situation. And it needs to change. This isn't sustainable. We need to do some things to right the ship or whatever. I mean, tonight. And this would be one of those things. We need a clear reporting structure. For potential incoming finance director, and we don't have that. And we need to end the bickering about that reporting structure.
I take objection to the word bickering, but I hear it.
Okay.
Um, I, I wanna, I do wanna say though, I, the, the, what, what question? When you talk about a finance director, you're talking about similar to our working job description? Okay, so about eighty percent of this is my statutory duties. Um, it could be, you know, that they carry out some duties for Donna if she so decides, but she has a deputy. I was not proposing to deputize the finance director. That would politicize things, I think, in this circumstance. What I have been proposing to do is go back to the status quo. Of when I came in in twenty nineteen and we started making reforms. Full support of the board and, and I wanna tell a couple of examples so that this board appreciates. What an organization looks like when it cuts. The legs out from under the clerk and, and has that imbalance. I wanna talk a little bit about some of the, the problems we're seeing in our audits. Lot of these problems, we grew fast, we didn't have the right staff. There's a lot of organizational changes that didn't happen. But these problems have been here for a long time. And I'll take just a very specific example, right? Like bank, bank statement reconciliations. When I came in in twenty nineteen, the auditor and I talked. We were not reconciling our bank statements. We were reconcet, uh, finance director was reconciling them alone to the general ledger. No one was verifying that. I said, I'm not going to sign off on this until I can see that too. I can't sign off. I'm not gonna put my name on this. And that was a kerfuffle. That's what change looks like when organizations have had practices that need improving. We were moving forward, bringing things in, and then this board, we all agreed. Donna would have a full-time deputy treasurer, and that makes sense, and I support that, Donna. And the finance director was supposed to be filled to be that counterbalance. So the dysfunction will continue as long as the, the treasurer. And clerk are not both adequately staffed. I also wanna note a couple of things, and I talked to Kathy about this. And I really raised this as to be instructive. I remember it was August, uh, April twenty twenty one. And the finance director and finance manager reported to me, you know? And the finance manager, because she reported to me, felt comfortable enough coming to me and saying, hey. I've been asked to write these backdated checks. Several hundred thousand dollars of tax distributions to be backdated to the prior fiscal year. I said, I'm not gonna sign them. I got your back. Don't worry. I got your back. I'll protect you, right? You, no, you did the right thing. Don't worry. I don't care if that's what we've done before. It's probably a misunderstanding. We're gonna pick up and do the right thing now. Donna totally understood. It became an audit finding. Okay, fine. And that, and that's true. But it became an audit finding because I wouldn't sign backdated checks.
What does this have to do with that? Who, who, who the finance director reports to?
What it has to do with is that finance director and manager felt comfortable coming to me and telling me that. Prior to that, I went back and looked all the way back to two thousand and five.
Why, why wouldn't they be comfortable doing it now?
One, two, three, four, five, six times. We backdated checks. It was picked up at only one audit. Kathy as clerk, signed four years, Kathy. You signed backdated checks as clerk.
And I was not aware of it.
Two years Nancy Hedberg did, and I'm not accusing anybody. What I'm saying is those people reported to the manager. The manager has a lot to do, has a lot of interests that they're trying to juggle. The clerk's interests are very focused. The treasurer's interests are very focused. And so I would just say, I think this will continue to, I, I will not, I. I, I would also ask, and I remember asking Mike Homier even before that February meeting, and he couldn't even imagine. Um, I don't know if the committee could. How would it be that the finance director? Um, would, would help me to prepare and maintain the journals and ledgers. In a, in a particular way, like, cause we had this where the interim administrator started directing how journal entries should be done. How would it be the daily work of keeping up the books? How would that get done?
If you have a problem with that finance director, he's, and, and he's not doing the right thing, we find out he or she's doing the wrong thing, you know what we're gonna do? I'm gonna fire this guy immediately. That's what we'll do. Because he's reporting to him. If he's not, if he's not doing his job, this is the guy, fire. Simple as that. I ultimately hold him a hundred percent accountable.
This is hypothetical.
Absolutely what I would do. Hundred percent, one hundred percent, hundred percent.
And it's my personal, it's my personal legal responsibility to actually. Make each one of these entries.
Absolutely, and you have all, you have all that. Whether that report person reports directly to you or via, you know, through a proxy, doesn't change that. That's the point I'm making. It doesn't. Given, and I think Kathy made, trustee Noel made some very salient points. When she said, given the level of dysfunction right now, given where we're at, this is, we have concluded after. You know, dissertation of all, you know, analysis of preponderance of the evidence, this is the best decision for us today. Six months from now, a year from now, maybe it'll change. I hope that it does. I, I think we all wanna change, but right now we need to get our house in order. And let's get a finance director hired and then we'll, we'll sort that out.
I agree. I mean, Mark and I have already talked about, you know, the, and with Donna and Will about the immediate help needed. I, I hope we all agree on that. I, I will just say, um. You know, I don't think this is the right thing for Sciop. I don't think this is in compliance with the law. I will be um voting no on this. Um, I enjoy working with Mark and will continue to enjoy um working with Mark. Um, but I will object to this, um, because I do not consent to this board to delegating responsibility. For keeping up the journals, ledgers and accounts of this township.
You're, you're not delegating responsibility, Jessica. That's completely untrue. You're not delegating responsibility to the board. That is an untrue statement. Plain and simple, an untrue statement. That is not true.
Well, I think he means that he disagrees with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but she's, but, but just.
She put a firm statement on it, so I'm just gonna go back. With all respect.
Absolutely, and when I say delegate, the statute has delegated to me this person a responsibility. And I do not give it to the board.
And, and, and we, we agree with that.
You're clear.
I just had my.
We're good, no, we're good. We, we got. Thank you for your comments.
I think now that, now that we've gotten that statement um made. Um, we are ready to move to call the roll on the motion, which is to adopt the attached resolution. To hire finance director who shall perform duties and responsibilities as directed by the board of trustees. And report to and be supervised by the township manager. Please call the roll.
Palmer? Yes. Flintoff? No. Brzezo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings us to, this should be much easier, um, the repeal of the eight seventeen twenty one supervisor job description.
I'll start. Can you take over?
All right, trustee Noel, please.
Okay, so this uh resolution is proposing. That we repeal the township supervisor's job description that was adopted. On August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. And I am going to propose insertion. Of an additional whereas clause at the end. Now, let me, let me stop.
Right before the.
Stop, no, I made a mistake there.
Oh.
It's now therefore be it resolved that. And this is the clause that when Mike Homier reviewed it, he suggested this wording. There's an and in the sentence that's in our packet. So the provisions of the August seventeenth, twenty twenty one resolution. Twenty twenty one dash thirty one, adopting the supervisor job description. Are repealed in full and here's the added part. Shall only have those duties and obligations assigned to the office of supervisor. By state statute or otherwise specifically delegated to the supervisor. By the township board. In other words, we're repealing. All of the non-statutory duties.
That were provided for in that resolution.
Yes.
But the otherwise means that additional resolutions that grant will authority are, are valid. That's what the otherwise.
Yeah, it's not resolutions, it's policies.
Yeah, any.
Procedures.
What if our, what if our ordinance says he has to do something?
It does.
So does he have to do that or say, I'm not doing that? I, I mean, I, I'm not opposing this, folks. I'm just trying to understand.
Me too.
Me too.
What's that?
I said, I ran it by you.
No, 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 but that is being, I understood it or that, that things haven't.
Let's call my, Mike in. Um, we had a lengthy discussion on it.
Could you say it one more time? I was trying to.
And kind of what the intention of it is.
The, well, I stated the intention. The intention is to cover none. The statutory duties that he is obligated to perform under statute. That might have been included in the job description. We're not repeal, we're not repealing.
Certainly.
Any, the, there has to be clarity that we're not repealing the statutory job duties.
Unless I consent.
Sure, sure.
No, you can't consent to that.
Okay, so I'll read it again. Shall only have those duties and obligations assigned to the office of supervisor. By state statute or otherwise specifically delegated to the supervisor by the township board. Mike, is that clear with your understanding of it?
Yeah, so uh, John, to your question, if the board adopted an ordinance. That required the supervisor to do something, that would be a delegation, a specific delegation of some duty to the supervisor.
Yeah. Voters don't adopt ordinances in townships.
No, but I just, what I don't want is Will to try to do something that. The township ordinance says he has to, or a resolution, or some, something that he's supposed to do. And he says, I'm not doing that, any of the state statute. I don't, I don't anticipate you would do that, Will. But I, I'm just wondering if you could say state statute, township ordinance, or directive. I don't know.
This seems like a non-issue. I can't imagine that happening.
Office of supervisor.
What, what if he wants to do something and we say he can't do it? Because as, as long as we're all clear that if an ordinance says he has to do something or is, must do something or has the right to do something. Or if one of our policies says that he has to do something, that, 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 that he can do those things. Pursuant to those policies and directives and ordinances.
I might, I might have a fix.
Or delegated by the township board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is delegated by.
I think what Kathy's suggesting does it, I also think that, you know, you, you could just say. That the resolution, adopting the supervisor job description. I mean, and, and it modified with a couple of words, the administrator job description. If you just repeal that resolution in full. Nobody's gonna question that. Everything else stands.
Well, we don't know who's gonna question what.
So just, can I read it back to you? So, so the way that it is, that you were saying that Kathy was now therefore be a result. That the provisions of the August seventeenth, twenty twenty one resolution. Two zero two one dash three one, adopting the supervisor job description. Are repealed in full and shall only, but shall only have those duties and obligations. Assigned to the office of supervisor by the, by state statute or otherwise delegated by township, by the township board?
Otherwise specifically delegated.
Otherwise specifically.
To the supervisor by the township board.
And Kathy, that and shall, I'm a little confused. So I'm thinking about that job description. I don't remember it exactly. But I remember that there were some headings that said things like, as delegated by the statute. And so Kathy, when you say and shall have only those or shall only have those. Are you saying the supervisor shall only have those or the power of the resolution shall only have those?
That might need a.
Let's put supervisor then.
No, 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 I'm.
What were you gonna say, Joe?
Do we wanna make the, this is a really long whereas, and I'm wondering if we should split it into two whereas.
Well, is that a whereas?
It's a therefore.
Uh, it's a really long therefore.
It's a resolve.
It's a long bit resolve. It's a long clause that I'm wondering if we should break down into two.
That's fine.
Into two, for, for clarity and understanding.
We can.
So in other words, the, 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 your first one.
This is, that's the other one. That's not this one.
Okay.
We're right here. That was J two.
So if, so if you were to put it into two, it would be, you'd leave the first resolved clause. The way it is printed in the resolution, and then you'd say, and. You, I guess you'd make that the, therefore be it further resolved.
That the supervisor. Cause you need to say.
That's the thing that seemed to be missing, that the supervisor.
The supervisor.
Shall only have those duties and obligations assigned to the office of supervisor by state statute or otherwise specifically delegated to the supervisor by the township board.
Yeah.
So you, you, that's two resolve.
Yeah, and I don't think we need the word specific or otherwise delegate.
My specifically is.
It's confusing.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
We can do it.
Or otherwise delegated to the supervisor by the township board.
And, and, and it's gonna be clear that an ordinance is a township board.
Delegation.
Delegation as are, are policies and other resolutions. Okay, right?
Yes, yep.
All right, so are we comfortable, someone prepared to make the motion?
I'll support.
So motion by Brzezo, support by Noel to approve the attached resolution to repeal the August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Job description of the Sciop Township Supervisor, unless there's further discussion. Are we ready to call a roll?
I am.
All right, please call a roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brzezo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion passes, six zero.
All right, that brings us to item J five.
Awesome.
To restore the necessary authority to Sciop Township clerk, perform financial reckoning and reporting for the township.
Great, I'm just gonna um bring in. Diane still on? I think she's not on anymore.
Is, is, is there's any objection to having Diane Benson give a presentation in support of this?
How long?
It was three minutes. Um, but you guys, this whole thing, I gotta say, we've always let little presenters in, so.
Ten and twenty is different than three, four, five.
Three, four, five, and this is that it comes up just, I mean. Anyways.
She's got, we're gonna give her five.
So she's, she's no longer here, okay? So what she was gonna um share a little bit about, and she had a nice presentation plan. So Diane Benson um is one of the most well-respected township people. Uh, she's a human resources professional, twenty, thirty years. Uh, she's a human resources professional, twenty, thirty years experience at U of M, and we were lucky enough to have her as the HR consultant. Um, last spring, Will had brought her in, in the spring of twenty twenty one. I'm not going to do this justice, but to give you kind of a sense of the incredible, unique perspective she has. So in March of twenty twenty one, we all decided to kind of look at the manager model, because we knew it wasn't working. It's kind of something that mostly small undeveloped townships do, is have a manager throw one professional staff person at it and hope it works out. Had a administrative, township administration committee, Will, Donna, me, and Will brought in Diane Benson and Dana Bree to, um, and Kathy, um, to, to be on it. And we started drafting up job descriptions, talking about what the needs really were. And so I would say, that's how we came up with the idea of an HR person, an administrator, you know, the project manager, which Mark is still in unfilled position, and a lot of the kind of areas that we needed to develop in. And then we brought Diane on board to the township. She created and recruited for the assessor and some other positions, and she wrote the administrator job description. Um, she's also got a background in finance, and so she took into concern, into account the internal controls. She surveyed a lot of townships about how they do things. So I just want to give her props, because the July twenty twenty one administrator job description was passed unanimously and was something that I think was very responsive to the needs of the township. I would say, um, you know, the, the, um, if you look at exhibit C, for those of you who wanna, wanted to, to know, that July twenty fourth, um, is what I had proposed originally for re-adoption. Um, it didn't have any of the offending provisions. Certainly had a role for the administrator in finance, acting as a purchasing agent, helping with budgeting, um, but certainly didn't overstep in the ways that the board later decided to do. And unfortunately, I think, um, you know, though with good intentions, has, has continued tonight. Um, I will also just scan this and share this out with everybody. This is kind of the highlighted, um, breakdown of in our finance director, the, um, yellow is the clerk and the orange is the board, in terms of where it shows. And so what had been proposed in this, of course, is, you know, that, that the finance director is responsible to the board, the clerk, supervisor, and treasurer to carry out the responsible financial administration for the SiO Township and its subcomponent units. Note, in this particular finance director's job description, where we have a treasurer who has decided to, um, has a full-time deputy, carries out a lot of the duties herself, there's not much in here that falls under the treasures, but it could in the future. And insofar as the finance director carries out the duties of the treasurer, I would hope that the finance director would still be directed by the treasurer. If the finance director said, hey, I'm going to be the one to start taking deposits to the bank, Donna would say, you know, that's right. And, you know, or if the finance director administrator said, hey, I'm going to take over the journals and ledgers of the township, I would hope that this board would say, right, so the, 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 I would just say, I appreciate the committee's work. I, I'm glad that you're making some progress. Um, but I would ask that this board continue, um, to work on this, because we, we still have, um, an imbalance and, and lack the checks and balances. And Mark, I have enjoyed working with you this week, and I know we're gonna, um, get some business done, so that will be good. That's all I have to say on this topic.
Thank you. Other members of the board comment? Are we prepared to call the roll and a motion, or?
No, we have, someone has to make the motion.
I didn't, I didn't make it, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, there is no motion.
Alright, so.
Jessica, that's, that's good, Jessica didn't have to make a motion. She stated her case, that's cool, I'm good with that.
That's fine, no, you tabled it, I mean, I can ask you all to vote it down if you want to bug record on that, but I wasn't going to.
No, that's fair.
Okay.
Jessica, I appreciate that, actually, truly appreciate that.
I'm sorry, I missed that, alright.
Time out.
I got you, Donna, most pressure over.
Title says, to restore necessary authority to SiO Township Clerk perform financial reckoning and reporting for the township. We've already voted on that, no. I don't understand what this motion is even about.
There's no motion.
There's no motion.
So thus far, it appears to have been an informational item. But if there's been a motion, i- i- it wasn't tabled, it was referred to committee. The committee has reported out, and the committee has made resolutions, but she's certainly entitled to bring things on her new business or unfinished business, and that's, I think that's what was happening here.
Yeah, and we've never referred anything to the committee before. And so I kind of, I honestly thought my item was coming back with, so that's all, with a report.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, so the model motion on here, no one's making the model motion. It's simply, we're treating this as if it was a discussion item.
Next item.
Okay, so the next item.
Someone could, if he or she wanted.
But we did.
I just, but no one has.
Yep. I'm good.
Okay, so I, I need to point out, um, that according to our rules of order, it is after eleven o'clock. And therefore, um, unless the board chooses to go forward, the remaining items, meaning action items on the agenda would be kicked over to the next meeting.
I make a motion to continue and finish the agenda?
That's important, let's get it done.
Yeah, we're almost there.
So what, what, what items are left?
The items that are, the action items that remain are the, um, information technology manager position, uh, so the authorization of that. And, um, there's an item, um, the appointment of Mary Gillis as editor of the township newsletter.
And public comment.
And the Aaron Farms wine tasting, liquor license, which was moved from the consent agenda. So those are the three remaining action.
These will be fact.
Excuse me, um, that we would have to consider. Um, now, if we don't approve the motion, then those would roll over to the next meeting.
At the top of the next meeting?
So yes, there's a motion to continue by Flintoff, a support by Palmer. And per our rules, it's at the top of the section. So it would be the top of new.
So.
I, 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 I feel strongly, we are obligated to finish our business.
And, 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 I'm not going to, uh, oppose your motion, but I, we all reserve the right to adjourn at any point, which is the motion of the highest order. So if it's eleven forty five, and we've got hours to go yet, or if, if, if we can't get there, I'm going to take it on faith that we'll be able to dispose of these pretty quickly.
Call eleven thirty.
The, the only, the only caveat there is, we can't adjourn before we have the second public comment, then that's part, that's part of our.
Right.
We'll be sure.
Call the question.
Well, you don't need to call a question, you just need to call the roll.
No, just, I, I, my.
Or we could, alright, alright, we, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Alright, so we, we're now proceeding with item K one, which is the information technology manager position. Uh, this is placed on the agenda by, um, our interim township administrator, Mark Thompson. Mark, would you like to introduce this item?
That probably relates to me not knowing how the system works very well, because I think Mr. Brazil is really the person who was.
You can defer, that's fine.
Sure. So, 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 again, I have no doubt that our current MSP provider does a decent job. It's no, no, no slam on them. Once, once you get to a certain size as a SiO, I think it, it's prudent that we have our own IT person to staff for a period. Uh, when you're a twenty-person company, probably not, the ROI isn't quite there, justified, you know, sixty-five thousand dollar type a year person. But when you have a person here in real time, Jessica's computer comes down, she picks up the phone, they come fix my computer, you get out there, he or she is there, Johnny in a flash. So I think that, that makes sense. Also, uh, I think it makes sense to take all those, those servers that we have sitting in, I guess, somewhere in a closet, wherever they are at, let's get those shoved up in the cloud, they can do that. Those share points that you were talking about, they can do that, we don't speak on that. And my plan was that I would do a initial triage, I'd hand them over to our CTO, who we just interviewed from a technical aspect.
Thank you.
Purely technical, right?
That's great.
Yeah, does this person qualify? And if he does, you guys decide whether you like him, or he or she, if they're, you think they're a thief or whatever, you know, where do you think they're going to fit? And that's all, completely up to you. I'm just going to say, hey, I think this person is, has passed our qualification test from a technical perspective. Um, so I just think, given where we're at, we kind of want to get her, I know you're technically savvy, let's get this kind of up to the, well, technically adapted, let's call it that way. Let's, let's get this, the whole South, South Township, uh, up to speed. And I think what we can also do is get more stuff pushed online in real time, the SAD's in real time, financial stuff in real time, that kind of, uh, Catherine's point, right? Get all that stuff a lot more real time, more transparency, our finances, or it just, it just, it just makes sense kind of thing, give more.
Just need somebody in house.
And it's in house, right, they're going to be in a cubicle somewhere, again, some of your computer locks goes down, you knock on their door, you call them, call them, whatever.
Are you prepared to make the motion?
I'm prepared to make the motion.
So the motion, the model motion, to authorize the creation of an information technology manager position with an annual salary of up to eighty thousand dollars to be budgeted from Fund one oh one dash two two eight. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Palmer?
Yes.
All right, um, is there further discussion, or are we prepared to call a roll?
So I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I'm curious as to what the people who work in the township day in, day out, think of this, like, you want to have my?
Yeah. So, so I would just say what I've said before, I'm deferring to Mark on his expertise on IT. Um, I want to say, and when we get a final candidate, um, you know, I want to know that if the services are going to be better and the cost is going to be comparable, I, I just don't know enough about all of what we pay NetSmart for all of the services and technology that we would have to buy ourselves. So as long as that costs, I mean, I think NetSmart, they've done a great job in terms of trying to move us forward. Their customer service, over the last six months or so, went down the tubes because they merged with a larger company.
Yeah.
But their backend stuff has been very good, they've been protecting us from malware very well.
We're not firing NetSmart through this, we're enabling a position in our budget and our, we're just, let, this gives us the authority to look and hire, if we want to.
Well, you'd eventually get rid of NetSmart, there'd be no reason.
Of course, of course, but yeah, you would just, just. Through this resolution, we're not saying, see you later, NetSmart.
No, 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 Mark would coordinate that transition.
It'd be a slow transition period, a logical transition period.
I mean, what about Donna? What, what's your take on IT support around township hall?
In-house, and if you talk to any one of the employees, they'll say, yes.
Okay, relax, I got you. Will?
I concur.
Okay.
So, let's call the roll on the motion.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
That brings us to.
Will, one thing, I see that Mike Homier is still on.
Oh.
Probably don't need him for the rest of the meeting.
That is true. Mike? You are, you are no longer required, your presence is no longer required. Thank you very much for joining us on short notice.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Okay, so that brings us to item K two. This is the appointment of Mary Gillis as editor of Township Newsletter. Um, and the person who prepared this agenda item is unfortunately not with us because she is ill. However, I'm sure there are others here who can speak to it, um, if they would like, if they would so choose.
Well, I, I just have to say, um, Jillian, um, reached out to Mary and they worked together. This is a well-prepared plan and schedule. I also want to note a couple of things that I noticed in their language. Not only does it, you know, show in the whereas is the kind of legislative history and rationale that the board has always had a newsletter on the board's behalf. Mary has been a, a well-trusted, first appointed by, um, Nancy Hedberg, and then became my deputy in twenty nineteen. Uh, prior editors have also been deputy clerks, I think it's just the nature. Um, Mary's so well-trusted in the community because of our work in elections. I think that, you know, people know her from running to deliver an absentee ballot, trying to get the signature, going the extra mile. And so I think that there's an extra trust value when you, um, involve an election administrator in it. I'll also say, um, Mary did an incredible job. I remember when Bryce and Jack and I sat down, we'd outsourced it to this, um, community member, Jeremy. Um, and she was like, hey, I'm an editor. And, and, and we did it, and it just took off. It went from black and white to color, much more content. And also she figured out a way to effectively get it to every mailbox in the township. And so we've gotten a ton of, um, recognition as a township, because we're lucky enough to have Mary, um, happen to be our deputy clerk and be available. Um, she's also put together a plan that addresses some of the board's concerns, or, or supervisors' concerns, cer- certain, I think the supervisors' concerns, noting what has always been the reality. And the first now therefore be a result, um, that the publication regularly would recommence with the spring twenty twenty-three issue with Mary as editor, a position distinct from her role as deputy clerk. It always has been, but this resolution makes that clear. Okay, it's a position appointed by the board, an additional, you know, role that she would take on. It's not related to her status as deputy clerk. And I would say, I'm seeing here that Jillian has enough be it further resolved. I guess that could be, that paragraph I would suggest removing. And then there's another be it further resolved. Final approval of the text of the newsletter will remain with the board as a whole, rather than delegated to any single officer, um, which it also had never, never been before, when I worked with Jack and all, all of us in the office. Mary shows it to as many people as she can, the more eyes, the better. And just also be it further resolved that the board will continue to make such appropriations as are necessary, and that the editor would be responsible for bringing that forth as part of our budget process. So pretty straightforward. What I liked was the schedule. Look at that, spring issue, contributions due, the board for approval, publication date, all laid out for the entire year. So I, um, I also appreciated that Mary put in two words, some of her thoughts for a new newsletter plan, um, that kind of lays it all out. So I'm supportive of this, and I'm sorry Jillian's not here tonight to introduce it.
Uh, trustee Noel, and then trustee Riser.
I'm supportive of this too. I, I've had the opportunity to work with Mary for many years. She has always done an excellent job. She has good judgment, her writing skills are sound. She can help improve articles dramatically with tweaking.
Yes.
Tweaking some things.
The cats out of the bag.
Yes, it is.
She works well with people. And her judgment is, I say, is, um, impeccable. I trust her completely. So I would strongly support Mary. She has a proven track record, she's known in the community. I think that her presence would bring some stability to the newsletter process. So I strongly support Mary for this.
Trustee Riser.
And I'm supportive of this as well. Um, I thought the newsletters she did were excellent. I know that there was, uh, 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 a time in which she resigned, and I, or Will, you've pointed that out, but I'm willing to do a fresh start, reset the clock, go forward in the interest of SiO Township and get good quality newsletters out there. My concern, um, distinct from her role as deputy clerk, does that mean she's going to be? What I worry about is we just, we had some struggles with the last newsletter, and, and maybe it won't happen with, with, with Mary, when, when Mary's re- returned to the editor, but.
What struggles, Joe?
What hap- What happens if certain people wanna write, include certain things about township politics or parties and roles? And like, some people say, what, let's say somebody wants to say, the bad audit's due to the clerk not doing the right custody clerk. The bad, I, I, I just.
Nobody would say that, Mary would edit it.
This is a, you know, reducio ad absurdum, I, I can see. But what, what if, what if it's more subtle than that? What, what, what if tensions arise, just leave it?
I, I would, I mean, and I would just say.
I'm saying that based on.
Yeah.
The newsletter we just did.
John, I would say, I have seen Mary from being inside, deal with this stuff, getting things from a committee member, from me.
And I'm not casting aspersions at all.
No, not at all, not at all. But what I'm saying is, that is exactly what a good editor does. And that is what they, they mediate, there's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a question for the board because it will have been.
But it's, but I'm saying it potentially is, Jessica. That's what I'm saying, to the extent that we, we can't agree on content.
John, uh, my, my suggestion, this is Mary's plan. If you have a question for her, ask her how she deals with it.
I, I spoke to Mary today.
Okay.
She knows I'd support her.
Well, then ask, um, but don't ask me, this is really Mary's plan, so ask her.
No, but it, but it's, but it's our motion, I, I meant you as a fellow trustee.
No, I know, but she put forward this plan about how it would work.
Right, so.
So ask her.
And I will, when I wanna ask her a question. But, but, but I'm not, but, and I did talk to her earlier and I think designer and publisher, I think she could live with and maybe that should have better said, designer and printer, is that right?
I think that's, that's correct.
Yeah, so, 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 trust me, I've talked to Mary about this.
Where's that? Is there a different?
Under the job duties would include designer and printer?
Okay.
Printer, decides the order, proof reads and submits to the board. Now, do we wanna have any role, uh, for the township manager for oversight of this or keep him out of it? He's got enough on his plate.
I, I think, he needs to keep doing real work and not make work.
But, no, no.
Um.
I'm just talking like from a review standpoint or no?
But we, it says in here that the board, like we did, you know, proof, not proofs, what's the word I wanna use? We could all look at it. If we felt there was something, let's say, political, we talked to Mary about it.
Yes.
And I would suggest perhaps that the township manager would have the same opportunity to look at it. Before we ship it down the road.
Oh, and would do a deep review, I would imagine.
So what happens, getting to trustee Riser's question? What happens in the situation where there is a dispute that, um, we can't resolve?
Five to two vote, six to one vote, seven to zero, well, the, 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 the newsletter is approved or not.
So.
It sounds like.
So, so.
Potentially.
So if there was a dispute that we couldn't resolve.
Yeah, I understand avoid that.
Informally, then it would have to come to a board meeting to approve the content of the newsletter before it could go to the printer.
Which gives everybody a setup to give along.
Wait, but to your point, could I, I hear where, could you add something that says, you know, the newsletter shall be apolitical or something like that? There will just be never politics in the newsletter or something.
I, I think, I think Mary gets that.
It's not.
I know she does, but if we put it formally, that way there's.
I don't think we need to. I could, because, because if it's political, it comes back to us.
Well, that's just seems to be a concern of everyone, so I'm, I'm just trying to address the concern.
No, I, I, but, I guess, and, and, and I'm just.
I don't wanna put Mary in a corner, that's the last thing you wanna do.
Again, this is not my resolution, so. I'm a big fan, but please.
So I'm, and, and I'm, so I would, I would like it to say designer and printer.
Okay.
Decides the order, proof reads, and I would like to say submits to the township manager and board for review. We, we review it. It means, you know, the township manager reviews it.
Well, of course.
Period, you know, and, 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 and then for review. And then, I think we can get rid of the rest of that because it says, final, starting immediately, final approval of the text of the newsletter will remain with the board of trustee as a whole, rather than delegated to any single officer, such that any of us can bring it for, to the, it can become a board item if we have to. And, you know, I know it's, I, I don't think it's going to at all.
I, I hear what you're saying, John. I think it's more of a time saver overall. And we'll get better newsletters on schedule by keeping every issue approved by the board, not just if needed, because what?
Okay.
But, and I, and I'll tell you why, and that's just to save time and be efficient, okay? And the reason is, cause I have seen managers and administrators, cause then we've got, you know, if there is some dispute, then you have, you know, Will trying to lean on the administrator or I'm leaning on the administrator, that is a waste of Mark's time.
You shouldn't be doing that anyway.
So, so.
I agree, I'm just giving you an example.
So, are we modifying the language then?
Can, can we say submits to the township manager and board for review?
Then, yeah.
Then publishes.
With the board, do you wanna pull?
With every issue, and said it and, or with every issue?
No, but then it says, I, what I would suggest is that then we keep the and, every issue will be approved for publication.
Use a different conjunction of it.
Okay, but the full sentence?
Yeah, 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 that's fine.
Yes, got it.
I was just gonna say, but I'll live with the and.
I have three changes that we've discussed here. Um.
But I wanna ultimately ask Mary if that comparts with what?
Ask her.
Oh, wait.
So.
Can we review the changes?
Yeah.
I'm actually just getting a little lost there.
Okay, so here's what I have as changes is now therefore be a result that the regular publication of an official township newsletter will recommence with the spring twenty twenty-three issue with Mary Gillis's editor, a position distinct from her role as deputy clerk, parentheses. With duties to include, sets the schedule for contributors, designer and printer, decides the order, proof reads, submits to the board and manager, then publishes and prints, and every issue will be approved for publication by a vote of the board of trustees. Strike the next be it further resolved, um, regarding the provision in the supervisor's job description, and that's it.
So the, there's two more.
Is all the clauses?
Oh, and I'm sorry, and the two other resolved clauses remain, be it further resolved, starting immediately, final approval of the text of the newsletter will remain with the board of trustees as a whole, rather than delegated to any single officer. And be it further resolved that the board of trustees will make such appropriations as are necessary to support the creation, publication and distribution of the township newsletter and that the editor shall be responsible for requesting necessary appropriations as part of the annual budget process.
Can, can we make a resolve that the board of trustees will make appropriations?
You know what, I wondered that. Um, the, no, we can, as are necessary, um, as may be necessary. That, I think that's how you get around that, right, John?
Um.
And.
It's eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah, we're just gonna say that and we're not gonna, we're not gonna argue later about if we have a mandate to spend.
Well, I just, I've just wondered, it, it seems sort of like strong language for a resolution to tell the board trustees that they will make appropriations. But, um, I think the key thing here is that, you know, there's an understanding that there's funding and that, uh, the editor will be responsible for, for asking for funding.
Yeah, which is what she does.
We're not gonna punish Mary by not funding her.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm gonna have. Yeah.
Set the motion.
I'll, I'll offer the resolution as amended.
So you're, so you're making the model motion to adopt the resolution to appoint Mary Gillis as editor of the township newsletter as presented?
As amended.
As amended. Is there a second?
I'm surprised.
All right, so moved by Flintop, support by Noel. Is there further discussion?
No. My only comment would be, I just, it, it, but he's okay with it. I just feel like we're circumventing a little bit of the, of the, uh, CEO's role here, the manager's role. I mean, normally I would expect that Mary would report through him, but it's kinda going to the board. But if he's okay with it, I'm okay with it. I'm sure Mary will do a fantastic job, I'm worried about that, it's nothing about you, Mary, it's just the reporting structure is.
Well, wait a second, I think the reporting structure is implicit in this, it's actually explicit in this.
It is.
That she would, it as editor, report to whoever is the.
To board, which is just, would, would be normally very unusual, would, in normal circumstance, I'd report to, to Mark. But I asked Mark and Mark says, hey, I, he doesn't, he's fine with it. So as long as he's fine with it, I'm okay with it.
And with this structure, honestly, knowing the, the people involved, like, everybody's gonna work together well, it's all good.
And, and I understand, my, my concern's always just being very consistent on recording structures all the time, because you send a bad message to, to.
I'm, I'm big on.
Yeah, that, that's all, I'm just.
Aligning responsibility with a sort.
But if everybody's okay with it, I'm good with it.
That's right, it doesn't work well, we change it. Always do that.
Call the, call the roll or call the voter.
We're in covenant, so, but I'm good with it.
Shall I call the roll?
Please.
I think we're ready to call a roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintop, yes? Brzeo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
No.
Motion passes five to one. Congratulations, Mary.
Yay, Mary.
Brings us to item G eight, which was moved from the consent agenda. This is, um, uh, to approve the, uh, tax resolution for the Heron Farm wine tasting room as prepared by the township attorney. And, um, I will just explain why this was on the agenda.
Can I move the table at the latest of the hour?
All we have to do is approve this, this form, that's, that's all, John.
Okay. The, the reason this is here is because the township attorney said in order for them to go forward and apply for a liquor license for their tasting room, which they would like to get rolling, not the tasting room, but the liquor license application. They needed to have a formal, uh, resolution that they could attach to that application. And our earlier approval of the conditional use, uh, including the tasting room was not adequate, uh, in his view.
To approve the license.
To, for them to apply for the liquor license.
Thank you.
Let me talk about it, I think this is another.
Well, it did raise some issues, because I work up on the conditional use committee. And there are very specific provisions that trigger allowing them to serve wine.
I, it's not, this doesn't supersede that.
Okay, okay.
This is just a formality so that they can apply for the liquors, which we thought they, and they thought they could do based on our action last fall. It was just Jim Pink saying, just to be on the safe side, make sure you have a resolution from the board, which we didn't do last fall.
So I would approve the attached resolution for the Heron Wine Farm, Heron Farm Wine Tasting Room as prepared by the township attorney.
So, moved by Riser, support by Brzeo, unless there's further discussion, please call a roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintop, yes? Brzeo?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes. That, that brings us to public comments. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter of review of the board of trustees.
I was astounded to learn today that Jim Murdy still has in his, uh, administrator access in B S M A. Why is that? Um, secondly.
Who's responsible for that?
Um, so another thing I was astounded, why is Jim Murdy being paid for holidays? It's a part-time employee. Uh, I read his contract and it states, it follows the employee handbook. Part-time employees are not paid for holidays. Can we get that money refunded that he got forty-five hundred dollars?
Let's take, it, it was an individually negotiated contract, so it would be something we'd have to look at. I, I think there's, it needs to be looked at.
Yeah, that, that does not sound right.
Um, just to offer my recollection, it was an employment agreement that Will had negotiated with Jim Murdy. And he surprised the board with it without any notice at a board meeting. So none of the board members had seen it prior to him handing it out at the board table.
However, I, I, I will say, I, my understanding is, Will, though, you did, and confirm for us, please, you did have Bill Thacker prepare that properly, right?
The employment agreement was prepared by Bill Thacker.
Sure, so I don't think we have a question about the contract, the contract being.
So I think I shared it at the time.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
I, I don't know, I, yeah, he had her there at, at Will's request.
Hey, uh, Jess, I just asked Mark, he said like one more day. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna resolve your, your, your issue, cause you made a good point.
Please do.
Yeah, so he said one more day at Joe, and then he's good.
Jim was talking about end of the month anyway.
So when he's, when he's able to come back, when he's feeling better, we can, we can wrap it up.
And then less.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I guess, um, clearly he's a, what, a lightning rod here, but he has certainly been helpful to me.
Good.
Uh, and has done, uh, I, I think he's tried to do all the things to help make this transition work and I think it's working reasonably well. I, you're not dealing with the swiftest guy here, so he had some challenges in that, in that regard, but, uh, we're making progress and, uh, I think he's been very helpful.
So I think, I think it's, whenever the right time is, Mark, here's the how. The how is Jim Murdy would write something on a piece of paper with a signature terminating his employment agreement, that would be one way to do it. Or the board would have to take action. I would prefer the former.
Yeah, it's a lot easier.
Um. I'm sure he would, it's up to you though.
But he hasn't, and, and, and it's because, and that's why I raised it at the last meeting, was because with the way that that contract was written, um, the condition, it, it doesn't automatically terminate. And we hadn't hired, so, so one of those two things needs to happen.
You've terminated, and once he's terminated, he should be terminated from all systems, right? So if he's got ultimate, you know, somebody needs to make a call to whoever, to get those.
Yeah, and I can tell Mark how to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, Jim would automatically expect.
Yeah, let's, uh, I think we understand what needs to happen.
And I think we need to do it in a manner that's respectful for Mr. Murdy. Well, I would agree with that.
Yeah, so, public comment?
Yes, I'm gonna segue from Kathy's comment, I'm sorry, trustee Noel's comment, about the surprise of the contract that Murdy had. Um, I've been to a lot of meetings, I don't know how many of them missed, but less than a handful of meetings in the last year and a half, we do. Um, in May of last year, it was the very week that administrator, uh, David Rowley, it was his last week. Unfortunately, it was also the week that our clerk was out with COVID and not to mention that the family dog. Well, we had a board meeting and in that board meeting, um, we had quite a few surprises. One, um, there was no real, um, I would say respectful farewell to the administrator from our supervisor. Um, there was a surprise, I believe that was the day that we were surprised with Sandy becoming the deputy supervisor and that Jim Murdy was made an interim administrator, okay? So that was on a Tuesday. And the spin that you heard earlier from our supervisor about how Jim Murdy ended up getting, taking on that access in B S M A because he was really concerned with getting prepped on the audit. Well, he, he took the job on Tuesday. By Thursday, he had access to B S M A. On Friday, at like five o'clock in the afternoon, he hurried up, took access and denied all access to our clerk. So tell me what the story was. Little bit of spin there, supervisor? Anyway, read between the lines, read between the lines, what you're hearing and what the actual facts are. But I also wanna say, you behaved awesome. I'm just commanding, just, you actually, I actually felt like my comments made a difference. And now I'm gonna go home and tell my husband that.
Thanks, Mom.
So, can I say something in response? I don't know.
Oh, sure, to me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The surprise is a good thing. And, and, and Mark Thompson has been doing a report to us and he lets us know, like, agenda items and what's coming down the pike.
Mm-hmm.
Having things of great importance that we don't have the opportunity to look at, to review, it really makes being a trustee difficult. I think it, you, you can't find out what it's about, you can't do your research, a- 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 and it causes more tension and more stress.
Yes.
More animosity, I think. So I think we all have to do better at. So I think we all have to do better at signaling to each other what's coming down the pike. And I appreciate you doing that, Mark, look for this, look for this, so I was like, oh, that was coming, he said it's coming, it's here. So, so the surprise, like, it's nice to know what's going to be on future agendas, like to just do it from like the Wednesday before, and then there's the chaotic getting up to speed and looking at it, hell, I had J one through J five and it turned out to be K one through K five because the, the thing that I printed got changed, so these last minute additions and changes really make governing trickier than they should otherwise be, so I, the last.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, but trustee Ryzer, what I think you are not hearing, and I did say once before, I don't have confidence that you really get it. I think what I, and I'm starting to feel.
I was talking to you, but I was talking, I was looking at you, but I'm talking.
I thought you were, I thought you were responding to that, I thought you were responding to me on my comment.
No, 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 I am, but, but the audience was seven people to my right.
Don't call us the audience.
So, okay, what I'm getting at is, what I'm getting at is, is it was, it was handled, and it was un- it was handled, it was mishandled.
Adding things last minute.
All the board members were surprised, the only ones that weren't were Murdy, Hathaway and Sandy and maybe Donna, I don't know if you were surprised.
You were, I, can I just clarify once? And this was simply a point of fact, as I was watching it from home on Zoom.
That's my fault, that's you, John.
John, John, at that meeting, just to be clear, it wa- nothing was added to the agenda last minute. It was a motion, two motions in the middle of a meeting that were made.
But it doesn't get any more last minute than that.
Correct, so I want to be clear that it was unprecedented. Um, and, and, and pre-negotiated clearly not only with the employee and, and so, and that was, and this is, and this is the second time in our recent history where we have had arguably two administrators at once.
Okay, we got a plan for the, and we already said that we have public comment from the uh.
Public comment, is there any other public comment, drink public comment?
Nice to.
Anybody on Zoom, put your hand up. Um, first up Jonathan Greifer, followed by Rob Pattinson, Jonathan.
Hey folks, it's late, thanks for listening to each other tonight. It was uh marked different from every other uh meeting I've seen in the last two years. Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan, next up is Rob Pattinson, Rob.
Thank you. Uh, as you're talking about Jim Murdy tonight, uh, on Kathleen's FOIA on, in uh Murdy's contract, it says that he will not be paid overtime past eighty hours in a work period. In the August fifteenth ending work period, he worked eighty-six hours and was paid for eighty-six hours. In the August fifteenth work period, he was paid for ninety-four hours. And in the August thirtieth pay period, he was paid for ninety-three hours. That's thirty-three hours of overtime that his contract says he is not due. Therefore, he owes the township two thousand three hundred and ten dollars. And that's as of the end of October, we don't know if he was paid overtime in November and December and January. Having said that, uh, two lovely things happened tonight, and that is that the agenda items that were removed prior to the meeting were put back on the agenda because the men in this group pushed back. And if it was the women, that wouldn't have happened. The other thing that happened tonight is that the supervisor's job duties, job description was rescinded. And that also happened because the men on the board pushed for it and the supervisor caved and he would not have done that if it was the women. And I appreciate trustee Brizow and trustee Ryzer for bringing some honor and integrity back to this board. The, the rational thought and discussion that is happening in this board now is a breath of fresh air, so well done.
Thank you, Rob. I, I do want to, in, in Jim's defense, I want to correct one thing. Jim Murdy has not been paid time and a half at all, uh, just to be clear. Um, I think there's a question about the holiday pay, but he, he, he was, he did work and was paid for many hours past what he was contracted, but it was one for one, it wasn't time and a half.
That's correct, he was paid at seventy dollars an hour for that thirty-three hours, that's why it's two thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
Is there any further public comment?
Um, I see no other interested public.
Motion to adjourn. So, sorry, move by Brizow. Support by Palmer, all those favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned at twenty to twelve.
Good night, everybody, good night.
It's, uh, it's in the works.